Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting. Today is November 20th, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Yesterday morning, I got a phone call from the police chief that longtime, the longtime Levens family here in town, that Bob Levens had passed away overnight. And Bob and his father Bill and the Levens are, you know, well-known from the Woodmont Orchards and, you know, helped build Londonderry, literally. So moment of silence for Bob and for his family. Thank you. Okay. You want to do this non-public now?
Preferably.
Preferable to do the non-public now. How long is it going to take?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Can we do it downstairs?
Certainly.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to move into non-public session on a tax deed, tax interest abatement, RSA 91A colon 3, section 2, subsection C.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
I take home.
I, Chad Franz.
I, John Farrell.
I, Ron Dunn.
Folks, we'll be back in five minutes.
For our personnel to go back to school. And when a person goes back to school, I would hope that that comes back to the taxpayers, and the taxpayers can benefit from that education. All right? And my, what I'm getting to is, you know, we have a person that's recently got a, admitted to the Mass Bar, which is nice, okay? Which, I don't know how that helps us here in New Hampshire, but if the person went and got educated, and the taxpayers paid for some of that education, then that should come back to benefit us, the taxpayer. All right? And I don't care if, what it is, and some of this has been done previously under other department heads and all that. But I look at it and say, all right, so if the assessors, somebody working in the assessor's office said, hey, I want to go and get my real estate license, and then I'm going to go practice real estate in Mass, we shouldn't be paying for that. Okay? So, I think it falls on, on you, Mike, so, sorry, to look at that stuff and say, if we're going to pay for X to go and get educated and receive a degree, how are we going to benefit, and are we going to benefit from that? What's the long-term benefit for the town? Okay? Not, okay, now that they got their degree, they might leave in a year or two, you know? What benefit was that for us? So, that's what I'm, I just would like that the council, the town manager, budget committee will look at that, you know? I mean, I know it's nice when we, and I have no problems adding personnel, I just think that we need to make sure that we utilize, maybe we have to restructure and say, all right, instead of doing this, you're going to do a little bit of this as well, you know? And that's fine. But I'm all for making sure that we have adequate personnel, and I like the fact that our chiefs are filling these positions and making sure that we have a full competent of staff on board.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Oh, and the town treasurer, can we talk about that later?
Public hearing on that tonight. Anyone else for public comment?
Ray Brezlin, 3 Gary Drive. I realize we're in budget season, a lot of things to look at, and a lot of things even like warrant articles that I don't think have been even decided, or how much money potentially is going to be included. Pardon?
Nothing for listening.
Oh, I saw somebody said something.
Someone's talking behind you, but I'm not listening.
Yeah. So, a lot of things have been discussed, like the Lions Hall, perhaps might be put on a warrant article, or certainly something to consider. In addition to that, we have, not that we're talking about the school department here particularly, but we have a lot of issues coming up with schools, kindergarten, and so forth. And then we have the other issues with potential water, municipal water coming to town, and where that money's coming from, and when it's going to take place. So, a lot of things to consider, a lot of things to consider as to the tax burden on the taxpayer. So, you folks have a very important job, I appreciate that, and I hope all things will be considered, and the folks be listened to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Yes, sir. Hi, Mr. Merrill, just need your address.
Yeah, Bob Merrill, 569 Mammoth Road, Londonderry. I missed the discussions on the November 6 meeting where they had, were going to close Mammoth Road at the intersection of Page and Drenia Field. First thing, there is no legal old Mammoth Road in Londonderry, it's just Mammoth Road. And I think it probably a bad idea to close the road. What I would recommend is making a four-way stop sign there. If that does not work, then we'd have to go to a stop light. It just, it definitely needs more work to be done, but I don't think that the solution is to just totally close off, go and sell, bond from that intersection. I think that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you very much. I missed that part of the, that part of the meeting, and I saw it in the Londonderry Times the other, on Friday. Thank you very much. Yeah, have a good day.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Merrill.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing them, public comment is now closed. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes.
There has been chatter with regards to illegal trucking on High Range Road. I know that we've been having a discussion about this for the last several months, with the understanding that we already Dillon rules state and everything, and that we follow what the state laws say. Can you please give us a synopsis of where we are with this complaint that we received, and what the conclusion was?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you point out, the town did receive a complaint, or a number of complaints, from one residence about a certain activity that's taking place at Sunny Crest Farm that involves the trucking and shipment of produce, as with any complaint that seems to have a basis. In fact, the code enforcement officer, in this case, the department head, reached out to the complainant, reached out to the, to Sunny Crest Farm, and gathered the facts. In this case, you know, anytime you talk about an agricultural use, there are additional state regulations and laws, as you alluded to. And there's been a determination at the state level that the activity that's taking place at Sunny Crest Farm is protected agriculture, agricultural activity. I, you know, there has been contact with the Department of Agriculture and the Agriculture Commissioner, Sean Jasper, and I have in front of me an email dated September 29th from Mr. Jasper that has been vetted by the town to the point that we're comfortable with the state's position on this matter. And I will quote from this letter, which is fairly extensive. Mr. Commissioner Jasper writes, "The words agriculture and farming mean all operations or activities of the farm. Perhaps we need to go further than that definition, as trucking products to and from the farm are part of those activities, even when the owner of the trucks may be part of another operation taking place on the farm." Commissioner Jasper goes further, stating, "I believe that when read as a whole, the legislation recognized that trucking is an important part of any large agricultural operation, and that the ownership of the operation or operations need not be common so long as those operations were part of agriculture and supported each other." He goes on to state that Sunny Crest certainly has the right to house their own trucks on the site. If that would not be seen as a zoning violation, then how is it a violation for another company engaging in an agricultural activity, a violation? He cites RSA 672-1 Roman 3D as saying, "Whenever agricultural operations or activities as defined in RSA 2134-A are not explicitly addressed with respect to any zoning district or location, such operations or activities shall be deemed to be permitted there as either a primary or an accessory use." And he closes by saying that agricultural trucking is included within the definition of agriculture that is protected at the state level. He closes by stating, "I believe that the complaint against Sunny Crest should be found to have no basis in law."
All right, thank you. Yeah, Sunny Crest has been, been there for 80 years, and actually 30 years before we had zoning, so.
That's correct. And the last thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is that anybody who has a grievance of their own is free to pursue that grievance by private right of action with respect to the use of real estate in any jurisdiction in the state.
Thank you. Okay. So, next item is public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing on the town treasurer warrant article, kind of a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved, second.
Well, those are favors, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
The town, the public hearing on the town treasurer warrant article is now open. Mr. Malaguti.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a conversation that we've been having for a while now. It occurred, it was placed on the ballot last year, it failed, and the consensus of the town council at the last meeting was, like the year before, that, you know, there's enough to talk about here that we ought to notice up a public hearing. We, we were up against the deadline to do so, and the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to hear from the public, and to determine one thing, whether to move forward with the process, which, if the consensus after tonight's hearing is, yes, we should move forward, requires notification to the Attorney General, to the Department of Revenue Administration, and to the Secretary of State to determine whether or not the proposed charter amendment complies with the law. It then comes back to us, where the town council would have the opportunity to say yes or no, to move that to the ballot. So, we could go through that process, you know, as we did last year, we could get all the way to the end and decide, no, we're not going to move this to the ballot, even though we've gotten that advice back from the state, that it's, it would be legal to do so. And that's where we are tonight.
Okay. Mr. Finance Director. You've brought this forward last year, you're bringing it forward again this year. Is there anything you'd like to add here? I know some in the community have said that you were being told to do this. I would like to know who's telling you to do it.
So, I understand the frustration that people have, where this was a warrant article that failed last year. My concerns last year remained the same, that anybody can become elected, the treasurer with zero experience, they can essentially shut out the finance department, and do whatever they feel is necessary, or potentially bad. Where the voter said no last year, I was under the impression we would leave it be. However, certain things happened in July that raised concerns from the public about budget committee members being able to control the finances. Where that is not the case, and the treasurer is the individual that could control the finances, I felt it was worth bringing up and talking about again, because there has been concerns from previous incidents for a position that actually does not have the authority to move money between bank accounts. Where the treasurer does have that authority, they do have the ability to walk the finance department out, remove our signature authority, limit our access to bank accounts, and do what they deem appropriate, whether that is in the best interest of the town or not. That is the reason why I'm bringing it forward. I felt it was necessary that we do our due diligence after the concerns that were raised back in July, for a position that doesn't actually have the authority to move money, to make sure that everyone that was concerned has the opportunity to speak about it again on a position that actually can move money. It's $40 million is our operating budget, and right now, all you have to be is 18 years old and get one more vote. That's the only qualification.
But we are also the bank for the schools, so it's $126 million.
Correct.
Okay. Ladies and, is that it?
Nope. Yes, that is it for now.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, and for the public to desire, to express their desire for or against, or anything else regarding the town treasurer, public hearing is now open.
You want my name again? Daniel Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive, Londonderry.
It's only because we have to keep our minutes, I appreciate it.
Okay. I guess, I got mixed reactions on this, okay? And I understand where Justin's coming from, okay? To protect the town. However, the people voted last year, and they voted no. When I brought up the issue of Gilchrist Road, all right, I was told the voters passed it, even though it was slim margin, so it goes. So, I think, you know, if it's good for one article, it should be good for another article. But I understand what Justin is saying, also. So, I don't know how you fix this, maybe give it a pause for a year?
So, the only new information we now have is?
Yep.
DRA has told us, we can do, we can run a background check on somebody if they're appointed by the council.
Yep.
That's something new that we didn't know last year. So, that's the only thing new the council knows, just so you're aware.
Is it possible to do that on somebody who's running?
No.
So, you have no way of vetting these people? Well, it's the same thing, we have no way of vetting you guys up there either.
And again.
You know?
Listen, you can run for any office you want to run for. But, well, we, that's the only difference. We may or may not do this.
Yeah.
But it's been brought forward again, there was a lot of discussion, because it was a budget committee member that didn't resign, there was a lot of upheaval, and that brought this forward.
But the budget committee has no control over the finances.
We know that.
Okay? They're advisory only?
We know.
And, so.
So, that's, if you don't mind, that's part of the reason why I thought that we should be doing due diligence, is the concern was there for somebody that doesn't have the authority to move the money. This person does have that authority. So, I thought we should discuss it if that concern was present for somebody that doesn't have the authority, that's protected, we should at least discuss it again.
Now, have we ever had any issues whatsoever with anybody who's served in that position?
Well, we've had the same treasurer for the last 14 years.
Then you're doing a good job, so just stay where you are. Anyway. You get paid a lot of money, all right? Yeah, that's my only, I don't know which way you go with it, John.
Neither do we, that's why we're doing this.
Okay. I mean, and I, and I understand him wanting to protect the town from anything, because you hear sometimes, you know, a town up north, or whatever, where, you know, funds have been missing, and stuff like that, so.
Way it this way, Dan, this is the way I looked at it. The guy who's in charge of $126 million brought this forward and said he thinks that we should be more careful. So, we're not going to ignore him.
Right.
So, that's why we're doing this.
Okay. So, my only thing is, the voter said no last year, so maybe give it a pause, look at it further, not during the budget season. The worst time to be doing something like this is during the budget season. You guys have enough on your plate, as it is, all right?
Thank you. Thank you.
Richard Polinski, 89 Hall Road. I guess I only got two things to say. One is, I understand Justin's concerns. The fact that you found out from DRA that you can do a background check, I brought that up 20 years ago, that anybody that's in, a department head that's in charge of money should have a background check, or at least a financial background, what their scores are. I volunteered to do it when I ran for treasurer, and they wouldn't do it. So, that, if you can only do it after elected, work with the legislature to change that, so if they run for the position, you can do it ahead of time. If they know they don't have good credit, don't run. That's their choice. This is not new. Over 20 years ago, I brought this up. That's one thing. The other thing that I got concerns with is the fact that people did vote it down. You have the right to bring it back every year. If you decide to do that, I'll do another warrant article to offset that, and put a three-year moratorium on it, and see if that passes, because it's kind of like the people aren't being listened to. And the last thing, I think it was the October 6 meeting, Peterborough was brought up. And while it wasn't directly said that Peterborough had a problem with their town treasurer, that's the oppression that was left, because the chair asked the finance director if they lost a million dollars, I believe the number was more like $2.3 million, and the chair, I mean, the finance director tried to say, well, that didn't really have anything to do with what we're talking about, the treasurer position, because that was a foreign cyber attack. I got the articles in my pocket, what they ended up losing, because they didn't know if they could get it back from their insurance company, I don't know if they ever got any of it back, or part of it back.
Minimal. Minimal back.
Minimal back, okay. I don't know what the final outcome of that was. My concern was, though, well, nobody said it was the treasurer, that was the impression that was left, because when Justin tried to correct that, and thank you, Justin, for doing that, the chair then said, well, did they lose a million? And he truthfully answered, yes. So, if we're going to bring up examples of towns that have been through this, that's fine, let's make sure that they're actually examples that have a bearing on this, and not something where if you kind of leave a little bit out, it sounds like, oh, see, they had a treasurer problem. That was wrong. And that's the misleading stuff that goes on in this town.
Thank you. Thank you.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. Perception is everything. My concern is, if you bring this up again, it's going to be perceived, or could be perceived by the public, that you're not listening, that you didn't listen to the fact that the town said no, and you're just going to go ahead and do it until you get what you want. Perception's everything. If you put it off another year, it doesn't look quite so blatantly like you're not listening. It's just the perception that people get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Esposito, 5 Shelley Drive, Londonderry. Mr. Chairman, I do want to apologize in the past if my tone has exceeded myself when addressing the council. I thank you for the opportunity to address the public hearing tonight. I do wish to speak to the issue of the town treasurer becoming a potential warrant article again. I wish to raise several concerns that I raised during the public meeting last year in regards to the concerns that the finance director raised. I apologize. I, I don't know as much about municipal finances, Mr. Campo admittedly, but I am a finance professional myself, and there are some items of note that I wish to raise. The two concerns that were raised with the town treasurer being an elected rather than appointed position last year were the fact that a well-meaning, perhaps bumbling, member of the public could get elected to this position, and then engage in, you know, some sort of transaction that would materially disrupt the financial operations of the town of Londonderry. However, as another citizen just raised, and I believe, as you acknowledged, Mr. Chairman, as I believe the treasurer acknowledged as well, we have not seen an issue where a perfectly fine elected treasurer has engaged in some error or misdeed that has significantly materially disrupted the financial operations of the town of Londonderry. So, that is the first note that I wish to raise. The second is that I do believe, Mr. Campo is speaking honestly, but I think he leaves out some points in regards to the checks and balances that do currently exist on the town treasurer position as an elected official. Mr. Campo was kind enough to illuminate for me last year when I asked if we had the private sector version of a rule of three, where there were checks and balances to the financial transactions that are being made. So, in the private sector, if you've got a staff accountant making entries in an accounting system, you've got a finance director, a comptroller, a senior accountant, usually multiple people reviewing that. In this particular instance, Mr. Campo did highlight last year during the public hearing that not only does he as the finance director serve as a check and balance against any transactions that the elected town treasurer may make, but the esteemed Mr. Malaguti as the town manager also functions as yet another check and balance against transactions that the town treasurer as an elected official may attempt to make. Not only that, but these folks are bound by the rules and policies and procedures that are set at the state revenue, at the state Department of Revenue, so that actually functions as an additional check and balance, because if this person exceeds the scope of their role, they can not only face removal from public office, but they can be subject to criminal action. So, there are already significant protections in place to ensure that the town treasurer as an elected official does not disrupt the financial operations of the town of Londonderry. I am to understand that there have been disruptions in other communities, as the chairman and as other individuals noted, but as the chairman is frequently fond of noting, we're Londonderry, we're just better than that. And speaking as somebody who works in an elected capacity with Mr. Campo, I know that he works very closely with elected officials, that he would do everything that he could to prevent something like that from happening. I'm not speaking as a trustee of the trust fund tonight, but technically, myself and my two other trustees of trust funds, who do also manage a significant amount of money from the town, could vote at a public meeting in the future for Mr. Campo to no longer function as our bookkeeper, at which time, he would no longer have the signature authority to submit forms on our behalf to the state, and he would also no longer have the authority to conduct banking transactions on our behalf. However, I can personally speak to the fact that Mr. Campo works far too closely with our public officials to allow something like that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure. Public hearing.
So, is it, maybe there's a compromise, and I don't know if it's allowed under the charter or the law, but what if we, instead of having one town treasurer elected position, made it a treasury board, where there were two or three elected positions, and then when something, when money had to be moved, or something like that, it would require two or three signatures, rather than just one?
That would also require a charter amendment.
Fair enough, but that still is an option.
That is, that's something that DRA would have to sign off on, and that's a larger charter amendment than what we're looking at. And just for clarifications, we can't do background checks on elected officials after they're, after they're elected. The legislative, what DRA says, the legislative body can do background checks on the applicants that the legislative body, legislative body is the council, before they appoint.
Right. I understood that. So, but separate to that, even if it's a difficult path, instead of trying to put this warrant article forward again, and seeing what the public has to say about it, is there another, is this a possible third option?
The amendment would probably require a commission.
So, I think, we can certainly get a legal opinion on that. I'm skeptical for, it's a creative idea, but I'm skeptical for this reason. I believe state statute requires there to be a treasurer. Our charter defines how we select the treasurer. But not only does state statute require that we have a treasurer, it sets forth the duties and the powers of the treasurer. And I think that where those statutes don't contemplate a board of treasurers, I don't, I'm skeptical that that, that that would be doable, but I'm certainly happy to look into it if that's the consensus.
Sure. Take a look into it, we'll see what they say. Willing to look at anything. Anyone else, public comment, for the public hearing on the town treasurer?
Glenn Douglas, 6 Overlook Ave. Kind of curious exactly what happened in July. I think I, I know what it is. But if you can do a background check for a treasurer, are we doing background checks for everyone else that's appointed? Because there's a lot of people in this town that are appointed. Are we only going to do a background check for finance? And the one thing I will mention is, when this came up last time, the suggestion was to have a town employee serve in this position, but the former treasurer, who's been a treasurer for 14 years, said it should not be, current, sorry, should not be a town employee. I think she said a retired person who might be interested in doing this on the side. But if you're going to do background checks, I think you should do background checks for everything, especially if you have the right to do it. I mean, there's, I don't see why we're singling it out for just the treasurer's position, if it gets done. I'm also not for this. I mean, it was 800 to 999, it failed. Everyone that showed up on the public hearing that was held 366 days ago, pretty much said they didn't want this, didn't want it to move forward, and here we are again, based on something which I don't see how it even correlates to the treasurer's position, but that's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to answer the question, why not for more appointed positions? The legal opinion we got was that you can do a background check if the position entails the handling of money. So, I think it would be possible to expand who we do background checks on, but not vastly.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Deb Paul here, 118 Hardy Road. I think it's kind of funny that one year and one day, I was sitting up I think it's kind of funny that one year and one day, I was sitting up there and this was brought forward, and we had a bunch of people here speaking on how they were against this. And I was, and I think Counselor Chad was also with me who voted against it, and we put it onto the ballot and people voted against it. I really think that the scariest part of all of it is, when someone is appointed, and I hear this all the time from people on different boards who are appointed to different boards, I will not stand up and question anything because I know I won't get appointed again. And I think that's a sad comment to make, and it hurts me deeply to have to make that comment, but that's an obvious thing. This way, an elected person is separate and doesn't have to worry about questioning anything that they see or not see or how things move. I thought one of Justin's biggest concerns was that he did not have enough help in his department, and I see us hiring for all these new departments, and one of the departments I felt that really is in need and does a huge amount of work here is the finance department. So in our reorganization that we have been going through in the last year, I would have thought that that would have been a priority, was to make sure that the finance department was healthy and had enough people to handle things so that Justin wasn't feeling overwhelmed and stressed. So I for one am against this. I think that leave well enough be, and I don't think, I tried finding something online where it was the treasurer that actually did something financially wrong, and I couldn't find anything. That doesn't mean it's not out there, I just couldn't find it. So if you do find something where it is the treasurer that actually does something, I would like to see that.
I believe back in 2008, yeah. Give me one second, I have it somewhere.
I'm sorry, what is the question?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in the meantime, just to address two of those things because I just think they're factually not correct. One is, I've never heard the finance director, and I've certainly never asserted that the reason we were suggesting looking at a change to the town charter in terms of how the treasurer is installed had anything to do with Justin needing more help. I've never heard that before.
We're not going to have a back and forth.
And, Mr. Chairman, I can assure you that staffing in the finance department is as much a priority as it is in every other department. So I would just like to make sure those two things are not.
She was looking for examples.
There was a question, I'm sorry, that I, I'm sorry, there was a question she asked him that I didn't hear, so I'm trying to find out what the question was.
Yeah, she was just looking for examples.
I'm sorry, thank you.
He said he had one, and he was getting it.
Thank you.
Horace Seymour versus, it looks like the state of New Hampshire, but it was Witchfield's treasurer.
Say that one more time.
Horace Seymour, and it was the town of Witchfield's treasurer.
Okay, and what did they do?
They stole money.
Okay, how? I'm just curious.
So embezzling at least $135,000 from the town of Witchfield.
Okay, okay. And I apologize if I misspoke, but I could have swore that last year, and I'll have to go back and look at the tapes, that one of the reasons you were looking for somebody was to work closer with you and help you with it because you were doing it all yourself. And I could be wrong, but I'll check.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we'll hear from the town treasurer and then I'm going to close the public hearing.
Kathy Wagner. I heard a lot of the town rejected the warrant article. That was my fault, and I'd just like to make the record clear to all of you that I'm the one who asked for this to be looked at. Because of the 14 years I've served on the treasurer's position, my skills in business, my skills with my husband and the public, serving this public entity of the town of Londonderry for over probably 30 years, I mean, and seeing what my family was put through doesn't bode well because it's even worse now. I used to go home with a lot of my opponents and we'd have a drink and we'd talk and shake hands. That doesn't happen anymore. So you're putting yourselves at risk of getting an agenda-driven treasurer, and that's what I'm worried about. Do I want to go out next year? Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy Wagner, 12 McGregor Court, Unit 302, 15 Perminter Road, and four lots at Pillsbury Lane. So I, I mean, on Hovey. So I got some property in town, so I can speak to this as a citizen. But the atmosphere of, even what I see here tonight, the atmosphere has gone so far down and so deteriorated, it's kind of tough on anybody who wants to throw their hat in the ring because of what can be done to you. And trust me, everything's been done to me, to the point where someone has even called my employer and said that I was doing illegal things with their product and, you know, and they can get away with that kind of stuff. So trust me, there are people with an agenda in this community destroying anybody they don't like. And that was probably part of the reason why I asked two years ago that we reconsider this position, because what the position is doesn't deserve the ridicule it gets because of becoming an elected official. And that was, that was the major reason behind this. Now, to say that we should wait a year and do all of that other stuff, we've done a lot of revotes, a lot of revotes. So I don't see that as an issue at all. I, I think it was my bad, my, and I take all the responsibility for that failure last year because I didn't get out and educate everybody on this position. So that's why I think 199 votes, is that what we're saying it lost by? Maybe if I had shown up and said why I was for this, people might have been able to come up with a better understanding of why we were going this way. In some of the statements that were said, the town treasurer statute was revised in 216, I believe. So all of the same issue, all of the same regulations and responsibilities and all that are placed on either they're elected or appointed. So there's no issue there. An appointed person's going to be just as responsible as an elected official. So I want to get that straightened out. Second, Patrick, I'm sorry, to your committee suggestion, in the banking world, it's going to be very difficult for that to happen because you have to have one signer on the account and one signer only who is the true responsible signer in the sense of a business and a municipality. There is the corporate ladder and you have your, you know, so it's, banks are pretty, pretty strict about that now because of all the fraud that's going on. So banks have really, really started to reevaluate that.
Excuse me, if we can't keep the conversation down, because I can hear you up here and you're interrupting her, I'm asking you to show the courtesy to the speaker and stop talking in the back or take it outside.
That's exactly, that's exactly why.
Or take it outside.
Exactly why it should be appointed and not elected anymore, because that's a member of the press. Think about that. Who has a personal grudge against me and has used that paper her whole life to try to destroy me.
Stay on the treasurer thing, please.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sick of this stuff. I don't have to put up with it anymore.
What is your point of order? What is the rules, what is the rule? What is the rules violation? What is the rules violation? That's not a rule. Point of order overruled.
Exactly, another reason exactly why it should be appointed. Because people volunteer because they want to serve and do the right thing, and a treasurer should not have to be subject to this because they're volunteering. Now, in regards to Peterborough, it was fraud and most of it was recovered. It had nothing to do with the treasurer, so that was definitely, I agree with that statement, that we shouldn't say the treasurer in Peterborough did anything. To Dan's point, you know, why are we bringing this up now? We have to because of the calendar. If we're going to put it on as a warrant article, we have to get it on the calendar. We have to discuss it now whether it's budget season or not, just like anybody, if Richard wants to bring his warrant article in, so be it. We're going to have to discuss that too, it's budget season and that's how it works. I just really think that it has come to a point where it was a, it's very noble, it is the right thing in my opinion, and I, Justin, I really appreciate everything, but I have to disagree with you respectfully in the sense that I believe if we're going to move forward with this, I want a citizen and not somebody already on the town. I want that transparency. I think everybody misunderstands that they are welcome to look at the books anytime they'd like. So there is transparency there, but I feel that it was, it was established when we incorporated 300 years ago. We didn't think we were going to have cell phones that were more powerful than computers that put the man on the moon. And as we know, the state of New Hampshire moves slowly. They gave us this option for an appointment, and I feel that that is the appropriate method moving forward. For someone to have to go out and put up signs, campaign, I've done that a long time, if you bring in my town council experience and everything else. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, and I give every one of you credit for stepping up because I know where y'all are, where you're coming from. But if you've noticed, people aren't volunteering anymore. People aren't volunteering for this. We're begging people to step on boards, to volunteer for positions, and it's like everything's become an agenda rather than a service to the community. And that's what I, and that's why I have highly pushed to have this become an appointed position.
Thank you.
I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Anything further from the council on this subject before I move forward?
Couple things, Mr. Chair, if I may. To the resident that spoke earlier who was previously on the council, just for a point of clarification, that was my first, let me start over. So the reason for my no vote was because I had a misunderstanding as if that vote was a no, in my opinion, not a no to put it on the ballot. So that vote that I voted no for was incorrect and should have been flip-flopped at the time. However, I have since then changed my personal opinion because of education really and a better understanding, and I will always be a person to allow the voters, put forward, put forward to the voters for a vote. And can someone elucidate a little bit more about Peterborough? Because I recall that their town administrator said something along the lines of that, like all small governments like Peterborough and other municipalities are not as well-protected as big banks or cities and stuff like that. Did we, what was the results of that investigation?
From what I heard, the results of the investigation is, is that they did not blame the town treasurer. What they said is, is that by statute, the town treasurer is always responsible regardless of what happens. At the end of the day, they have to provide the checks and balances for that community. They did not, they did not directly lay fault. I mean, what actually happened was is they transferred, like we do, they transferred money to the school to make them, to make a payment, like we do, and they got tricked to sending it to the wrong place. What the investigation said was is that there were not enough checks and balances in place. No one got legally held responsible, but what they're saying is, is that you should have had more rules, more everything.
Protections.
What I think Justin is suggesting is, is that if he had somebody who actually gave additional oversight and other ideas and he would have not more help, but someone else to talk to. Not that the current, the current town treasurer may resign tomorrow, and if she ran again, she'd probably be the town treasurer again, she's won five times in a row. So, but I think what you're trying to do is plan for the future.
I'm trying to protect the town in terms of, this is a high-risk position. You're, you're in control of $126 million throughout the year that putting that in the hands of anybody is concerning. I wouldn't let my personal finances be put in the hands of anybody, and we right now we're allowing all, all the taxpayers' money to be put in the hands of potentially anybody. And that's where my concern comes in.
Who does this locally? Who appoints a treasurer now? Hudson?
Oh. Barrington, Campden, Derry, Greenfield, Greenland, Hebron, Holderness, Hooksit, Hudson, Witchfield, Madison, Manchester, Merrimack, Merrimack Village District, Nashua, Pelham, Stratum, Swayze, and Wolfboro.
So this isn't something new? This is not unique?
Correct. We would not be the first ones to be doing this.
Okay. All right, so the question in front of the council is, is do you want to continue to investigate this and then hear it again in January and then make a final decision, or do you not? That's the question in front of the council. You can, you can go through the whole process with DRA and say no.
I think a wise person looks at all their options, and I think that, yes, I understand that it was voted no previously last year, however, there's been new information, additional information, additional education, and like you said, we can, we can call an audible all the way up until the last minute. Why wouldn't we explore and look at all those options? That's my own opinion.
So I'm looking for a consensus of the council. Do you want to let DRA do the work or not let DRA do the work? That's really what it comes down to.
I'm in favor.
I'm fine with looking at it. I'm good with DRA looking into this further.
Okay. This does not mean we're going forward with it.
Of course.
It means we're going to do the investigation.
Did they not look into it last year?
They did, but you have to resubmit again this year. There's, so there's a process that you have to follow.
Great question.
No, but that is a good question. They did look into it last year, they did give us their advice, and we did move forward.
Thank you.
We may not move forward this year. Depends, let's see what happens. That's good, is that what you need?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So just to be clear, it's the, it's the language that was noticed up for today, and that's, that's the language that we're going to be sending to DRA.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. New business, Resolution 2023-24, the readoption of-
District Chair, we need to close the public hearing.
Didn't I just close the public hearing?
You did.
I thought we just voted.
We closed public comment, not the public hearing.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. My mistake, I thought I said hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed, thank you. I thought I said hearing, I thought I said comment, my mistake. Resolution 2023, the readoption of all veterans tax credit. Mr. Hamilton.
Real quick, point of order, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself being a recipient of this credit.
All righty.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Uh, so this is relatively brief, as we had previously readopted the veterans' tax credit under RSA 7227, I mean, 28A. We've been notified by DRA that we need to readopt RSA 7228B, the all-veterans' tax credit, which is slightly different, but at the same amount of benefit. Uh, currently, there are a hundred and sixty-nine residents that receive the all-veterans' tax credit. And the distinction between the two is when you served in the military. The all-veterans captures some periods of service that were not determined to be a wartime, uh, service. And so uh, those hundred and sixty-nine recipients, if, um, if this re-adoption fails, their credit would go to fifty dollars rather than the seven-hundred-and-fifty that they currently receive.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
There's no questions, I'll accept the motion to approve Resolution 2023-24.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, having, um, uh, resolved that matter, um, I think the, uh, time is now to determine whether uh, the council will be using budgetary use of fund balance. Um, this was kind of, uh, related to this, uh, question. And so we, we are, and I think Justin can add, uh, add to this in terms of how this works. Under the Taxpayer Relief Act, uh, two-hundred-thousand dollars has been, uh, applied to lower the tax rate each year. Um, this is the last year of the Taxpayer Relief Act. Um, it's, it's, uh, so we've, we've included that in all of the numbers, uh, that we've presented. Um, the question is, is there any appetite to do anything additional? Um, and if so, then it will require, uh, another hearing, um, after tonight.
What do we have in our, um, in our fund right now?
There's currently six million, two-hundred thousand.
We're about three million short of where we were, um, five years ago? More or less?
I, I believe so, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the numbers for that. Give me one second, I can tell you though.
I'll make it easier for you. What's your recommendation? Should we take any money out to give taxpayer relief, or should we leave it where it is and grow it further?
I, I believe at this point, we should leave it where it is, and if you're gonna decide to utilize it, it should be utilized to limit the tax impact for the other Warren articles such as capital reserves to allow the benefit for the taxpayers going forward. So instead of, um, a hundred thousand being charged to the taxpayers for the fire department equipment, it should be fifty thousand, where fifty thousand goes to that. So it decreases the expense on that aspect.
So you're suggesting let the voters decide if they wanna use undesignated fund balance and for us to leave it alone?
Yes.
That makes more sense to me.
With, with the understanding, Justin, that the, uh, two-hundred thousand under the Taxpayer Relief Act-
Two-hundred thousand remains, correct.
Is already included in the projection, okay.
Okay.
Um, and it, it, as I mentioned in previous years with fund balance, it allows us, at this point where interest rates are five north, it allows us to grow the interest revenue, which also assists in lowering the tax rate. We, we set what I believe is a record high last year. And our fund balance is lower, as you mentioned that it was several years ago, where we could potentially have had more, where that money remains for the taxpayers, but the interest earned on it lowers the tax rate for that year as well as potentially future years. Where the interest rates are so good right now, I recommend leaving it where it is and essentially utilizing it when interest rates drop below, and we don't get that benefit of having better interest rates and lowering the tax rate through the interest revenue.
Yeah, and this also gives you a little leeway that the tax bills are gonna be late now because DRA has not given us a tax rate?
Correct.
So when do we expect we're going to get a tax rate from DRA for the December bills?
Um, we'll need to adopt this resolution, and then, um, it'll go to DRA to, uh, finalize items.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we have a motion, I think we, we adopted this resolution, I believe.
Yes, we did.
Yes, uh, the, right, it's, it's in effect, uh, it requires two-hundred thousand dollars a year, absent, uh, certain exceptions that I don't believe are-
The all-veterans-
Oh, the all-veterans was adopted, yes.
Gotcha. Alright, so people, we've seen their tax bills before the end of the year? We hope?
We're hoping. I'm really hoping.
Okay. So people, if you understand what that means, is, is that Justin still, regardless of whether we get the money from the taxpayers or not, Justin still has to send the money to the schools. So that's-
And the county.
And, and the county. So that's why we need DRA to get things moving. I'm gonna move on, next item on new business, fire ice van range and replacement proposal. You're a funny guy.
Good evening, leadership. Um, thank you for your time here tonight. Coming before you this evening, um, in attempt to save roughly a hundred thousand-
You are?
Bo Butler, Fire Chief, Lenandery, New Hampshire. In an attempt to save roughly a hundred thousand dollars for our engine replacement. And we can do that through your council approval tonight to enter into our new engine build. And in doing so, fulfill a need. I wanna be clear that this agenda item is separate and divorced from FY twenty-five. These, these two things don't, don't have anything to do with each other. This is just using already appropriated funds in a creative way to fulfill our need to replace our, our engines. The way it works, the Lenandery fires, the command staff will get together, come up with some creative ideas, and then we bring it forward to the finance director. If it makes sense to the finance director, he'll support it. If it doesn't make sense, or we fail to explain the why behind it, he'll say no. And Justin says no often, which is his job, and we, we appreciate him for that. In this case, we brought forward to Justin, uh, creative solution to fulfill a need, and he supported it. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy LeBlanc, who, who has a better understanding on how to explain this to you guys.
Uh, Philip LeBlanc, Deputy Fire Chief, here in Lenandery. So our, um, fleet of fire engines have about a ten-year lifespan on them, and the two engines we're looking to replace were built in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, so we're coming up on that ten-year lifespan. Um, the reason is, after the ten years, we start to incur a lot higher, uh, repair costs. For instance, um, just last week, we had to replace a turbo and engine two that cost us seventy-four hundred dollars. Um, and that truck is ten years old. The other issue right now is in the fire truck manufacturing world. It takes three years to build a fire truck from the date we signed for a fire truck. So unfortunately, when it used to take nine, ten, eleven, twelve months, and we could sign for it at the ten-year mark, knowing we would get it in a year, we, we can't do that anymore. The other problem is the cost. So as it stands, the reason we're coming to you for this is because if we sign for two trucks now, we lock in a price. And with all fire truck manufacturers, every quarter, there is a price increase. So with Pierce Manufacturing, who makes our fire trucks, there is a price increase of twenty thousand dollars this November thirtieth. There'll be a price increase in the first quarter of next year and the second quarter of next year. We're looking to sign for two trucks and lock the price in, sending one to build now and one to build in six months, thus offsetting, setting the timeframes on the payments of these trucks upon delivery. By doing that, we also get a discount on the two trucks. It's minimal, it's fifteen thousand dollars a truck. But altogether, between the three price increases and the fifteen thousand dollar savings on each truck, we can save about a hundred thousand dollars by signing for them now. And unfortunately, we're not gonna see them for three years, so our trucks are gonna be at like the thirteen or fourteen year mark by the time they come in. So we'll have to work with those, those pricey, uh, repairs, but we feel as though by signing for it now, we're at least saving some money on this front end, um, to lessen it down the road.
Questions?
Yes.
Uh, do we know, at what point do we need to start making payments on these trucks? Justin may have that info better than you two may.
So going back to interest rates, this is the one where we could get potentially a prepaid discount, but the amount of that discount does not equate to what we'd be paying in interest during the time before we receive it. Um, so when talking with Phil and Bo, what I recommended was we, we make the payments, we take out the lease and all that, when we actually take delivery of the truck.
And is the vendor good with that scenario?
That's how it normally would work.
Yes.
Yep, you have the option for the prepaid discount or to pay when you receive the truck.
Okay, so even though we would be agreeing in to go into contract with them on these vehicles, we would not need to make any payments until these, until we actually receive them?
No, all we're doing is locking a price in.
Wonderful.
And, and so we could lock in a price for one now and wait six months and incur sixty thousand dollars in increases, or lock in a price now on two, offset the build date on one until July first of twenty twenty-four, thus separating them, but still maintain that price with which they're giving us right now.
I, I discussed it, I'm good.
I do, I do have a couple of questions.
Please proceed.
So, um, Justin, just a question, so picture, well, statement on a question, picture buying house and then I've heard, like, with the interest rates being significantly high, if rates go down, having the option to renegotiate or refinance a home, can we do that with a, with a loan like this? Cuz I, if I, if I may, sorry. Um, I recall last year, you had came before the council and said that you had renegotiated a rate. If I, if I recall correctly, or it was a couple of years ago, you, you had renegotiated terms, and it said, save the taxpayer and the town amount of money. Am I wrong on that? And you can say yes.
So I think you're confusing the initial master lease agreement that we entered into.
Okay.
Where we negotiated a situation that saved the taxpayers money because rather than paying an escrow company to hold the funds while we waited for vehicles to come in.
Yep.
Um, our banking partner allowed us to be the ones to hold the funds.
Okay.
So that way, we didn't have to pay them, and because we were able to group all the vehicles together, I believe we got about a point nine-seven interest rate. I could be wrong in that, but I'm pretty sure it's around that. It, it was very, very good.
What is-
Because we were able to group them all together and, um, break it out in that aspect.
Okay, thank you. What is the term of these loans? Are they five years, ten years, fifteen?
So for these, it would be ten years, ten to twelve years.
Ten to twelve years?
Depending on how we wanna separate them out to make sure that we don't run into the situation again of needing to buy two engines at once.
Okay, so just for clarification, you wanna separate it out so we're not buying two at once?
Correct. I think that buying two at once is a heavy load for-
When there's, how many engines?
Four.
Four of them. Four? So fifty percent of the fleet is a sen- you wanna offset that, so we're not do- replacing it every-
And that's why they're asking to enter into it now. What they'll do, what they've told me they'll do is uh, push the build of the second one back six months, which pushes, pushes us into the next fiscal year.
Okay. So engine I know you have engine one through four, but, but play with me for a little bit, I'm sorry for not having your terminology. Engine one, meaning first engine of replacement. Whether it's engine two or three or four, whatever, but it, the first engine that we'll replace. Would that affect? Would that purchase be in FY twenty-four or twenty-five? Or twenty-five and twenty-six? Cuz you mentioned offsetting.
The first one, we're gonna be, the one that's not pushed back. So it seems like, if I'm, Bo, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it would be fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, so twenty-six would be this first engine, and then you're proposing fiscal year, what for that other-
Twenty-seven would be the first payment on the second engine.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Where do, where do these funds come out of? And how do we traditionally handle it?
This is actually a two-part item. If you look at page sorry. Page seventy-three. And it is line item four-seven-four-four, capital lease property. Part of the reason I'm recommending pushing it back like this is this is currently what we have allocated for their engines and other items, equipment such as that. Around fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, several of their larger leases fall off. So we'd be able to utilize this for a minimal to, um, fingers crossed, hopefully no increase in the budget aspect, because you'd be using what's already budgeted for. Um, and one of the other items we'll talk about later in the budget workshop is uh, I've spoken with the fire department, Phil, Fred, and Bo, regarding their capital reserve fund for the fire department equipment, currently at one-seventy-five. Um, actually breaking that out, putting a hundred thousand towards their capital reserve fire truck equipment, and allow that to serve as a, almost as a down payment to help lower the cost over the ten years once we enter into that agreement.
So these are anticipated funds that are already budgeted?
They are budgeted for various other apparatuses at this point, and their final payments will be around that time.
And then, another clarification, I'm sorry for all the questions, I just wanna have a better understanding. A hundred thousand doll- about a hundred thousand dollar discount?
So it's about, it's a twenty thousand dollar, roughly, it's a twenty-one thousand dollar increase every quarter. Now, their next increase is November thirtieth, so coming up here. So that's why we're looking to sign for one in the next week, to not incur that.
So you wanna sign one for fiscal year twenty-six?
So we would sign for both-
Eight-six months, or-
So we would sign for both right now, but we have the second contract backdated for production till July first of twenty-four. For, for production, starting production, the three-year start mark of this. By signing for them right now, though, we lock that price in, so we avoid the, the, the price increase this thirtieth. And then we avoid the price increase the first quarter of twenty-four and the second quarter of twenty-four. At twenty-one thousand dollars, an increase, so sixty-three thousand dollars. And then by signing for two, we're getting a fifteen thousand dollar discount, if you will, on each truck, so another thirty thousand dollars. So that's where the, the rough hundred thousand dollars comes from.
I'm good. Thank you. Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Are we required to do any down payments on these?
No.
Awesome.
I mean, we're looking at that hundred thousand as, should it be approved? Um, as a way to lower the annual cost.
Yes.
Wonderful.
And that's one, going back to my recommendation for fund balance, something of that nature, where we'll put it in the capital reserve, it'll grow interest until we actually have to make the payment to help again, lower the cost to-
Use the funds in that kinda manner.
Yes.
Right.
What's the purchase price?
One point one four four nine six four.
Per.
Per truck.
Alright, so ladies and gentlemen, what they're saying is the engines that you see on the road today are one point one four million dollars. Just so everyone's aware of that. That's what, that's what fire engines cost today.
And these are things that we need to work a hundred percent of the time, every time.
That is correct. Anything else? What do you wanna do?
I say we move forward.
I'm fine with that.
I agree.
Good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, if the budget committee doesn't mind, I'm gonna jump over and do the voting machine so the moderator can get out of here. This, you know, it's, he's asking of course whether we'll move forward or not. Um, adoption of the, of the new electronic ballot counting, um, devices. So the moderator needs a decision from the council whether or not he has permission to move forward to, uh, to make this purchase.
Can I speak to you real quick, John?
Of course.
Okay. So first off, I wanna thank, uh, Sherry, our, uh, our town clerk, and I wanna thank Jonathan, our town moderator. They both met with me, um, and I appreciate your time. I had lots of questions for them, they answered all my questions. So I am, uh, I'm perfectly satisfied moving forward.
Anything further?
Good to move forward.
All he wants to know is if we can. Everybody's good with it?
I'm good with it.
Good.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager, please assist them in moving forward with the, uh, the ballot devices.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, sorry about that, see, I told you it'd be quick. Alright, budget workshop, now for the fun stuff. Justin.
Alrighty, so we have various items, quickly. I gave you all an updated tax rate calculation sheet, those will be available back for anyone in the audience as well. We have a couple changes that have occurred since the last budget meeting.
Sorry, first question, where do we get, where do we get this tax rate from?
What do you mean? What do you mean?
This is not our current tax rate.
Are you looking at this page?
What's our current, what's our, is?
So, okay, yep, nope, I understand your confusion.
I know our tax rate isn't, our current tax rate isn't $3.79.
That is correct. This accounts for the revaluation and the rough estimate I have on what the valuation would be.
So this is our best guess at what DRA is going to tell us?
This is, so no, this is for next year's tax rate, not this current year. This is for fiscal year '25.
Okay.
So the reason why it's so much lower is if you look down at the bottom, you'll see that I have $6.2 billion as the town's estimated valuation.
Okay.
I believe it was around five point something last year, so the revaluation bumped it considerably.
Okay.
Which is why you see the lower dollar amount than normal.
Just making sure, thank you.
So, one of the big changes is, as I mentioned at the budget kickoff, when doing the solid waste department, I had accidentally put in fiscal year '23's budget in the fiscal year '24 section. That doesn't actually impact any of the financial requests for '25. All it changes is essentially the increase from '24 to '25. It decreases it by about 100 or so thousand because it goes from that contract being, give me one second. The increase on that goes from, I believe it was about 459 down to 160. So that was one of the bigger ones. Then there was a couple of other changes in terms of the police department IT line. I had accidentally included the telephone budget in there when it's part of their management services total budget. So that was double counted, so that was removed from both default and operating. In total, compared to the last budget, it is a decrease of 87, 120 dollars. With 2,000, or sorry, with $20,900 coming from the police, we recently hired three new firefighters, so I was able to put in their salaries, which decreased by 51,000 approximately. DPW, I had the open position at a mechanic position when it was actually supposed to be a truck driver laborer, so that decreased it by about 16,000 with everything as well. The finance department recently hired a finance clerk, we extended the offer and what we're bringing her in at is expected to be higher than what was initially budgeted, so that increased by about 9,800. Going back to the tax rate sheet, as I mentioned, with the fire trucks, one of the items that we discussed was they initially had requested 175,000 for their equipment capital reserve. We have split that out where 75,000 will go to the equipment and 100,000 will go to the fire department truck capital reserve account. Other than that, I believe everything has remained.
Questions?
Mind if I start?
Please proceed.
Okay, Justin, so you, you mentioned some of the salary changes. So, a couple of questions, I'll start with the finance one. So, I think you just said this, but there, there was, we saw a $54,000 increase from '24 to '25 in the finance department?
So that's twofold. One, the, my, one of the recent hires from last year, when we got that individual, they informed me that they would not be able to start full-time. They would need to start part-time and because of the level of talent she is, I was willing to make that work until she was able to go full-time. So rather than budgeting last year, her for the full year at full-time, I, I budgeted appropriately to make sure that it accounted for that, which is why you're seeing an increase because several of those months are at part-time in '24 and the rest are at full. So now that she's a full year, you'll see that.
So this was an open position that you filled in part last year and in full this year?
So, when we hired her, it was understood that she wouldn't be able to be full-time right away. So rather than budgeting full-time for that, I budgeted appropriately where I estimated when we'd be able to convince her to come and join me full-time.
Okay, all right, so in continuing the conversation about salaries, so there's a few lines that we saw some increases. Under the police budget, I was looking at the uniformed officers and there was a salary increase of like $390,000 and we were wondering if that is the result of the new contract. I initially was wondering if, if the health increases, health insurance increases are part of that, but I've been told that they're not. I also wanted to know if any of the police positions, any of the 67 positions are still being funded at the lower rate that we did last year, since they're still vacant, or have we moved away from that practice?
So, the reason for the increase for the police is it's twofold. One is the contract, the contract is in place and it has that increase. The other aspect is, as you mentioned, the way we budgeted for them last year. In addition to that, we also moved one of the 67 to a, the legal department in last year's budget. If you look at this year, that is no longer the case and we moved that position back, so you're getting an increase of a full position being moved from the legal back to the police.
Okay, but that position was never filled either way, right? You moved that position to legal, it wasn't filled, you moved it back to police, it wasn't filled?
Correct.
Okay, that leaves to later questions. So hold that thought. Okay, so you've moved away from the practice of funding those four positions at the lower rate?
We, we have spread out how we fund them depending on steps and looking at what we've kind of received for new, new hires.
Okay.
And where they've come in and funded it based on that aspect.
Okay, but we saved a bunch of money last year by funding those differently.
Correct.
We're not doing that now.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Okay, I have one more, I have three questions that are all tied to salary. So, in general, the, the regular salary lines kind of across the board seemed like they were going up quite a bit. I have 20% plus in some departments, some are less than that, but it, it, those numbers always, in each case seem to be a pretty significant increase. So we want, and we're talking about town manager, finance department, we just spoke about town clerk's office, I wanted to know what does this, is, what is this attributed to and I wanted to make sure that we didn't add any positions?
So, we have added positions in the town manager department.
By hiring vacant positions that were already there?
For some of them, yes.
Yeah, so, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I think what you did was is you recategorized positions that were vacant to new positions, is that it?
I believe so, so the, so the.
An administrative support position that remained vacant.
Correct, has been vacant for a number of years and that position we hired back because as, as the council knows, that position is spending somewhere around 60 to 70% of her time handling right-to-no responses as well as compliance. And that was something that the council felt I shouldn't be doing at, at, you know, as the town manager, that we shouldn't necessarily be doing at, at the legal level, at a full, you know, multi hundred dollar an hour cost, and so that, that was the decision that was made there.
That was a position that already existed.
The position has existed in the town's organizational, it, the, the position exists within a certain union and it has for a long time, yes.
Okay, so.
Just answering his questions. I'm trying to make sure you get your questions answered.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying. Do you have any new positions that were not there before?
In my department? No, we did not create any position, any positions that haven't existed in the town before, correct. Just trying to get you an answer.
Do you have any positions that do not exist in the '24 budget that do exist in the '25 budget?
Yes, the administrative support coordinator.
Okay.
And that serves as the, the right to know.
91As.
The 91As.
Correct.
And we don't need a warrant article to add that?
No.
You actually don't need a warrant article to ever add a position.
Okay.
We've chosen to do it as a practice because it's something that made sense. Hey, you guys want to take that outside, please?
You know, the, the, the number of open positions floats around, as you know, Mr. Chairman, from time to time and there's always a certain number of unfilled positions within the town. You know, I can tell you that historically, as the town has grown increasingly complex, the burdens on the town manager department have only increased to the point where, as you know, Mr. Chairman, I was doing all of this, most of this work and frankly, it wasn't a good use of the town manager's time. And what has, during, during that time, as the demands on the town manager department have increased, staffing in the town manager department has actually stayed level or perhaps decreased over time because when Steve Cotton left, that administrative support coordinator position was left unfilled and it's been unfilled until recently. And so that is a, that is something that I think directly affected the level of service that certainly my department was able to, to meet and it's something that was of enough concern to the town council in recent, in the recent time that we, that I took the decision to fill that position.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Not really.
Then, then let's keep going.
So that position's an $80,000 position, the line item's going up 125,000 dollars. First question. Second question, we've never run anywhere close to these numbers, the highest actuals were back in 2021, but just comparing back to 2023, we're talking about nearly a 50% increase in salaries.
So I can let Justin break down the 124 number, because I think that's what you're asking.
Is that a loaded labor number?
No, that's just salaries.
I'm just asking.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just trying to find out.
What page are you on, man?
It should also be noted that the, the, the HR, the HR position is in my department. As, as the council knows, we recently promoted an HR manager to an HR director and that resulted in a, in an increase in that as well and some of that is captured in that.
Our former assistant town manager used to be the HR director where our current assistant town manager is now at the planning in the planning department. So slight, slight changes there.
Correct.
So, because is Kelly, I'm just sorry, is Kelly budgeted in the planning department?
In the planning department, is my, or in my department.
And split to the town manager's office?
Yep.
Yes or no?
She is budgeted in the town manager's department.
Fully?
Fully, or she's fully budgeted in the town manager's department?
Correct.
Okay.
In the town manager's department is the HR director, administrative support coordinator, town manager, assistant town manager slash economic development director and the executive assistant.
Did the planning department number go down?
No. Went down eight and a half thousand. And that's one of our other questions.
So the planning department currently has the town planner, GIS manager, land use assistant and recording secretary, which is a very part-time position.
But when we did the, we did that reorganization.
So that was one of the items you had mentioned to me and you're looking at the actuals. In fiscal year '23, the town planner position was open for a period of time, which is why you're seeing a lower number there. The budget for that was?
These are all good questions, I just, I want to make sure they get answered.
Yeah, no, it's good. We're on 110 now, thank you.
There you go. The budget in fiscal year '23 for the planning department was 275,860 dollars. The current budget for '24 is 192 and '25, I believe.
It's 198.5.
Yep. So that's where you're seeing that drop for the position from the reorganization from last year.
Okay, but you're saying that two, that 211 number, the 2023 actuals, was low because we had, wasn't?
The previous town planner had left throughout the year.
Okay, otherwise we would have seen a more significant drop.
Correct.
Okay.
If you look at the budget, that's where you'd actually see the drop and that's, I'll, I'll be sure to include the budgets going forward for that. I thought the actuals would be more useful, but I think going forward, I learned I need to include both for you guys to be able to see the difference on that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right, did you get your question answered yet?
I did.
Okay.
On the town manager side, yep.
Just want to make sure everybody gets their questions answered.
Thank you.
Yes, we're.
Please proceed.
Okay, so.
I don't know what they are, so I can't help you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to kind of put them together, group them together, we're talking about salaries, I figure we just talk about salaries across the board.
I'm here to answer questions, I love it, let's go. I work hard on this, I love when people actually ask it.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so we were discussing when it came to the library salaries, we saw that there was a.
Joe, hold on, library director?
Still a question for Justin.
No, no, he's going to ask the library director and it's her budget, we only fund it.
Perfect.
So it's, so, so Erin's got to talk to her, her budget herself. Erin, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, so we saw a significant increase in library salary budget. We're, are, we were wondering what's, did we add a half-time employee in, for the '24 to '25?
No, there was no additional staff added. I think, Justin, is this the email that you sent? Didn't you send an email asking about library staff budget?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one I believe I asked, Maureen, I believe you asked, asking about the.
I, '23 was not fully staffed, but you said '24 was?
Correct.
And in '24, there were eight part-time employees and for '25, there's nine. So it looks like one was added. Library technician was added, that wasn't in, in the budget last year.
There was no positions added for FY '25 at all.
There was a warrant article that failed.
Right, we did not fill a position because of that.
But there are now nine and there were eight last year.
Cause, yeah, there shouldn't have been a pos, I don't think there should have been a position added because we had a, we had someone leave last year and then it got filled, but that was not a new position, they just filled the position that someone had left. There shouldn't have been.
Okay, so Justin, if you look at.
So we'll have to look into that.
If you look at 104, it's got the list of all the positions, right?
Correct.
If you have that page from the previous year, that would probably answer the question.
Is that in the budget book, Justin, that's online?
The one online is 104, page 104 is where, is where we are, Mr. Town Manager.
Is, from, from last year's budget book?
Oh, I don't know about that one. I'm looking at 104 and this year's.
And you want the same, the same sheet from last year?
Preferably.
Okay.
While we're on that, do we have anything else that we can multitask on?
Sure, sure. So, I guess since we're on salaries, we'll stick with.
I just want to get everybody home at some point.
We're moving quick. Yeah, so the salary budget, it increased by 10% and there are some questions about the merit and the cost of living increases for a library employees, that there was the 5% merit increase and the 3% cost of living. We were wondering if we could, I, did everyone, so for the merit, did everyone receive?
Not yet, because it goes over, some of them go over the fiscal, between the two fiscal years. So, at, at this time, not everyone's received that, no.
Okay, but it's budgeted in for everyone to receive the.
Yes.
And would, or I should ask, for fiscal year '23, did everyone receive the?
Not the full amount, no.
Not the full amount?
No. I can't give you specifics, but.
So in other words, you're budgeting for it, but no one's guaranteed is.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, all right.
Oh, so, sorry, can I jump in?
That's because we don't have a collective bargaining group in the library and we have no, so we don't have a union for.
Yes, sir.
People who don't know what a collective bargaining group is.
Yes, sir.
So it's at your discretion?
This is a personnel policy that was adopted by the Board of Trustees and it then is at my discretion to go forward with those increases if we feel necessary.
Okay, so we were just wondering if we could max the merit increase to two and a half percent. The reason why was we want to bring the salary increases in line to the police and fire salaries. So going forward and we'll be starting with.
So you want them to be at two and a half percent and not at the 5%?
Correct, that was.
I have a question, what's our non-exempt policy?
It is, it's, it's more in line with what Mr. Cassidy just said, I'll, I'll get you the specifics in a moment.
Okay, I just wanted to know that because if, if Erin's going to go back to the Board of Trustees.
Yeah.
And the, and the town already has a non-exempt policy, let's make sure that Erin has that policy.
Sure.
If she's going to go back to the Board of Trustees and ask.
Yeah, I'll have to do that.
The non-for, for the town is.
We'll just make sure Erin has it.
Two and a half merit and then a quota tied to CPI up to 3%.
Okay, so let's just make sure Erin has the right information to take back to the, to the, to the library or something.
That's great.
They have to decide, we don't get the.
And how does that, how does that work? If that, if, if the town and the town manager and the budget committee want to propose that, lowering that max merit increase to two and a half, does that request come from us, does it come from you, does it come from the library director?
So, I mean, this is, this is something that I don't think has been explored in a long time, is what is that dividing line between the library trustee statute and the[1756.62] is what is that dividing line between the library trustee statute and the town council statute? But as the chairman pointed out, uh, the, the town couns-, it's the town council's budget, the town council funds the library, and with, you know, obviously the participation of the budget committee, and the town council could, I, I think, decide to fund the library less. But I don't think, and I, I would want to get additional legal guidance on this. I don't think that we could tell the library trustees, you must have a, a personnel policy that says this.
We can, we cannot tell the library trustees anything. This came up about ten or twelve years ago.
Correct.
And what happened was, is that the, um, the library trustees and the, and the library director then, um, decided that they were not going to take the advice of the budget committee and the council. So the council cut their budget and reduced funding. I, I'm not saying that's going to happen, I'm not saying that's something the council would do, but I'm saying that's what happened then, because that is the only action we found after getting legal advice that the council was allowed to take.
So my concern is that, you know, our concern is that in the long run, if we are still going with three percent, um, cost of living and a five percent merit, then library salaries are going to outstrip the other roles in the town, that are only receiving three potentially on cost of living and two and a half on merit. So maybe we could, we're talking about right sizing lines last year and fixing lines and getting things kind of to better reflect what we're actually spending, but I think this also is an opportunity to perhaps right-size this and get it more even across the board in the town. And if that, if that results in a question or a request to the library trustees, that's fine. Rather than something like in the past where the town tried to force a library's hand, you know, we can, we can ask.
Right, I don't, there, there are no trustees here tonight, or,
I believe not, no, sir.
But that's certainly something, Mr. Chairman, I think that the trustees could, could, uh, could speak to. Uh, it's a fair question.
It is, and let's just be clear, the town council isn't going to force anybody, Sam. Just so we understand, we're not going to, we're not going to heavy hand anything, we'd rather work collaboratively.
Absolutely. Certainly, we can suggest something, but we cannot tell them what to do.
So what the question is, is the budget committee is asking if you would please take that question back to the library trustees and return with an answer.
Sure.
I just have one more clarifying question on, oh, it's,
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that, and that is to request to bring it down to two-point-five percent.
Well, to bring it in line with the town policy.
Into line with the, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Non-exempt employees in town, non-union employees in town.
Non-reptile, yep.
Okay.
You have it right. So I just have a question on how the numbers, the budget numbers are derived. So it looks like we're assuming the full eight percent increase in salaries. The twenty-four budget was created a year ago, in theory. Do we reset the starting point that it, for that eight percent? Meaning, you just, you just said that not everyone got the full five percent merit.
Yes, sir.
We should reset the starting point on that eight percent growth, not the twenty-four budget, in my opinion.
So what I do is I take, let's see, the budget presentation was on November fourth. I take the salary line for, I believe it was September thirtieth. I take what people are making at that point and base it on that. So,
That just so happens that they're making exactly what's in the twenty-four budget?
That's not necessarily the case.
Well, so I'm just saying, it's exactly an eight percent increase from the twenty-four budget to the twenty-five budget. Assuming that same methodology was used from twenty-three to twenty-four.
Can I ask a clarifying question? When is the merit increases done? Are they done on anniversaries? Or are they done?
For the library, are you talking for the town?
I'm for the library.
Um, they're done on their anniversary date, yes.
Right, so the number should stagger?
Yeah, it, yeah, it staggers throughout the year.
So my point, so if we, if we had, if we budgeted twenty-four last year, things have changed, merits have been implemented over the last twelve months. We shouldn't be basing our eight percent off of the twenty-four budget, we should be basing it off of what the current,
I understand what you're saying.
Salaries.
Yeah, so let's take a look at that, okay? And across the board.
It's a very, it's a very reasonable question.
You want time to dig into that and get back to us at the next, next workshop?
Well, if he comes up with the answer right now, I'm going to be pretty impressed.
Well, no, you're absolutely right, it shouldn't be exactly an eight percent. I grab, like I said, I grabbed the payroll for, I believe it was September thirtieth, and,
Everybody might have passed their anniversary date by then, but that's something to verify.
So, but if it is eight percent, then that would imply that all of the employees got the five percent merit.
Correct.
No, what she said was, is that she's budgeting for it, they don't necessarily get it.
Exactly.
But maybe they did get it the year before.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's what you're saying.
Yes, so the assumption is,
I'm trying to be the interpreter.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The assumption is that we assume that everybody's going to do well and get their increase in order to budget for that. That's not always the case. We hope it is, but it's not always the case. Um, and so we plan for the best possible outcome, if that makes sense.
Yep, and then if we move back a moment, it looks like Mr. Malaguti found the document. And, and just me glancing at that document, it looks like there's eight part-time salaries and a vacation cash out for part-time. And on the twenty-twenty-five document,
So, can I, do you mind if I interrupt?
Sure, go ahead.
If you look at the first library technician and go to number of units,
Oh, there's two.
Yep.
Okay.
I did it different this year, where I listed everyone individually rather than putting them through a,
He tried to trick you.
That was a dirty trick, Mr. Cassidy.
Okay, so moving right along.
I was going to say, I'm like, I definitely didn't put in another position.
Uh, so moving right along.
So since I've got you here,
Of course.
We had some concerns over G-Milks and the, the adoption, um, the cost, mainly it's going to be the cost. We understood from the budget workshop that you were estimating, what was it, twenty-four thousand dollars for the upcoming year, that one-time payment to enter into, right, the G-Milk services, that one-time payment?
That's the onboarding cost.
Onboarding.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's the one-time payment.
So the yearly cost after that, what are we looking at? And what is it based off of? How do they come up with the costs?
So the, what, what we've been told, and so G-Milks uses a formula to come up with the costs. I don't have the formula, I don't think I have it with me right now, but, um, it's based on how many, what, part of the basis is how many libraries are in the consortium. So they factor in that, they factor in our number of patrons that have library cards, the size of our collection. There's a number of other things, I, I'm not off the top of my head. And then they use that in a formula that comes out to the amount of the annual cost. It's the same formula that every library in the consortium will use. Um, and what we've gathered from them and that formula, that the annual cost of, going forward for a full year, normal full year, would be about forty-one thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. And something else that we're, uh, wondering, because we, uh, library patrons can already get interlibrary loans. What is the, what are we gaining by entering G-Milks? If individuals can already get interlibrary loans from other libraries, from other college libraries? And by paying, um, you know, the forty-one K a year, are we, how much more are we actually gaining by entering this service?
So we, we do get interlibrary loan through the state, so that van comes twice a week. This interlibrary loan would also be a different van that we would get from these other thirteen, twelve, thirteen libraries. So we would have access to their collections. Currently, right now, our patrons with a Leach library card cannot go to the Dairy Library and check out materials. They would have to pay a membership to their library in order to do that. So with this consortium, they will be able to go to all of those libraries, check out materials, have materials sent here from there. They can, let's say they get a Dairy, they go to Dairy Library, pick out a book, check it out, come here. They can return it at our library, we would, they would send it back through the van service. So that interlibrary loan grows from just access to the state. Not everything in the state is available, it's going to depend on, sometimes it depends on the library or where it's coming from. Sometimes they don't have the staff to send it, there's a number of factors that go into that. In addition to growing the collection, one-point-four million more items, we would have access to a better library catalog. Currently, our library catalog is really built for the school system, the public school system, so it does not offer the type of services that we should be offering our patrons. So they can't get text alerts, um, email receipts, any, um, overdoses, things like that. There would be a better communication between the patron and the catalog and their account. So that's one of the services. G-Milks would also take over, I think we mentioned in our budget, um, presentation, the IT piece. So it would serve, it would save our I, the town IT department essentially, time that works on our catalog. There have been times where the catalog goes down, they have to look into it. That would all now be handled by the G-Milks consortium.
All right, and what other additional cost savings come, right, because this is an additional forty-one thousand dollars a year. So where else is, um, can we see lines decrease in future years?
So yes, you should be able to see some of the, um, the materials cost decrease, so we won't have to buy every book, um, that out there, because we would be able to get it more easily from another library, and our patrons would be able to go or get it, like I said, easily from another library. We would also save on the time it costs to catalog materials. So because a lot more libraries would be owning, right now, we're the, we're on an island. We do all the cataloging and processing. That cataloging would come much easier because those records already exist. So we would just be attaching to records that already exist. Saving time on our cataloger, which is only one part-time person, and my assistant director helps out. So we would save time there. Besides materials, there's other things that we would save. I'm, I'm kind of blanking right now, but I can certainly, um, send those to you. I do, I, when I, in my presentation, which I can definitely send to you guys, I did mention some things. So we won't, you, you probably won't see, like, it's not going to be an immediate scene, but like, as we go through the years, there will be a savings in, um, by joining the consortium. I come from a library that had a consortium, we were part of thirty-six other libraries in a consortium, and it was, it was a great benefit to the community. There is much more access to materials and access to programs and other things and collaborations with other libraries.
Anything further on the library?
So you're of the opinion that spending this forty-one on G-Milks year to year will be a savings in the long run?
Absolutely.
Will it tax our staff differently? Is it going to be a cost associated with staff to provide for G-Milks, like, uh, technical services, technical liaison? Is there, is there, is it going to pull staff from other duties? How does that work?
So we're already kind of, in a way, preparing our staff for the process, so that they're aware of what to expect, because this will be new to them as well. The workload, we don't know exactly what the workload is, we, we know that it's going to be more because we're going to be getting in more materials to hand out to our patrons. We're anticipating more patrons coming into the building, using our library, which they haven't been able to do before. So we anticipate it to be busier. We ca-, I can't predict right now exactly what that looks like, but certainly we'll be keeping statistics going forward to, to show that difference. But we definitely anticipate it being busier. And we've started, um, I guess you can say, planning the office spaces to accommodate for the van, the, the different libraries that we'll be delivering to, or the van service will be delivering to. So we are, um, we are definitely preparing for that, that change. And it, it will be an additional work for the staff, but I think no more than what they're, it's not any additional work in a sense, it's just what they're doing now, but more. So, and we are, like I said, we are preparing and, and we will be training them to take it on.
So the taxpayers are, we have no voice in this decision at all?
Well, the trustees have approved to join the consortium and to move forward,
Okay.
at this time.
So the trustees are the legislative body for the, for the, um, library. They are a totally separate form of government, and they, they make the decisions, and they're the elected body.
Understood.
You know, but just the way the law works here in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
But the, um, yeah, I mean, the only, the only power really that the council has is we can cut their funding. If, you know, if, if that was what the council decided to do and says, yeah, we don't want this, we're going to cut it forty-one thousand dollars. If that's, that's the only way, they wouldn't be able to do it.
Okay. Are you in any sort of way kind of prepared for that, that might happen?
Cutting of the budget?
Yes.
I, I'm hoping it doesn't. I can't, I, I mean, I, of course I don't want it to. I understand the concern, I definitely understand the amount of money, that makes total sense to me. But we looked at this really carefully, um, my staff and I, and we did talk to the trustees about this. This, and I've talked to, actually, the, the other libraries in the consortium, the consortium itself. This is a time where we felt it was a really good opportunity to move forward with this. If we don't, to my understanding that I got from G-Milks, if we don't do this now and move forward with this change, we will not have the opportunity in the future, because they will eventually cap the amount of libraries they want in the consortium. So, um, we should have done this, in my opinion, ten years ago, um, to give it to our patrons. But at this time, I was told by the consortium that there is a potential that they would cap the amount of libraries that they want in the consortium, because of how much they can handle, of course. And so going forward, we may not have this opportunity again. That was my understanding.
Any other questions on the library?
I just have a couple of follow-up and,
Please proceed.
So, you've cut ten thousand dollars in materials, but we're going to be paying the twenty-four thousand set up, plus the forty-one thousand, and then forty-one thousand every year. So I don't see how we'll catch up.
So the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It'll be like, just a compounding of more money for the consortium than we're cutting in our own materials.
So the twenty-four thousand, nobody's paying that, we're actually raising funds for that, and the trustees are paying that. So the onboarding cost, the taxpayers are not paying.
I'm talking about the prorated cost that you're going to start in twenty-four, it's twenty-some thousand dollars.
Yep, yes.
So, um, you're not really cutting in your materials enough to make up for the, uh, additional expense of the consortium, which is like buying a new car every year. And the taxpayers right now are really strapped. And, um, inflation, can't pay for energy, can't heat their homes, can't buy food. And it just seems like, um, a want and not a need. And I, I just want to go on about the needs of the staff, because you could also come to us in a year or two and say you need more staff, because G-Milks, uh, requires a designation of a voting member, one per library, and an alternate for a mandatory meeting once a month. They require commitment of staff to key committees, like technical liaison, liaison to G-Milks, and technical services staff to the metadata integrity group. So that's actually more need for IT and not less.
No, because G-Milks would be taking care of that.
No, that's a commitment that you have to commit.
Yeah, that would be me and my assistant director would be going to those meetings.
For all of those?
Mm-hmm.
And then that takes away from you helping the rest of the library staff, so then you're going to probably need to ask for more staff in the future.
I can't say that we won't, I mean, as we continue to grow and serve the community, there's a possibility we would need more staff. I think that would be go for, for any department.
So there's a commitment of staff to participate in all other committees, and that you must demonstrate financial stability and commitment to the future support of G-Milks. So you're really putting the town over a barrel for a lot of money every year for the next how many years?
But we're giving them, in my opinion, we're giving them a service that I think is really important and that they need, and that they've, in our library service, that they've agreed to, to, you know, they want.
Do they need it as much as energy, heat their homes, or buy food?
I don't think that's a fair comparison. We're providing people with materials and items that, if they can afford, like internet service and computers, and helping people apply for jobs and things of that nature. So we are providing a service to help with that. And we provide resources to help them find, um, organizations that can help them heat their homes. So we are there to help those people. We provide a space where they can use free Wi-Fi and free study rooms in order to do Zoom calls and work services.
Right, but we're talking about, Absolutely, but that's not G-Milks.
One percent of time, please.
All the libraries in G-Milks are also in the interlibrary loan system that we're all paying state taxes for. There's hundreds of libraries in the interlibrary loan, and there's eight colleges, including, um, NEC. So I'm not really seeing an advantage to joining G-Milks in addition to the interlibrary loan provided by the state for that much money.
Well, I mean, you have access to, our patrons would be able to go to their libraries, which they can't do now. And that interlibrary loan come, is included in the cost.
But don't you want our patrons to come to our library, where they can get the internet access and the help with the notary and?
Yeah, and they do, they come, but they also need materials that we don't have, because we can't fit in the space or we don't have the budget for, and this would be allowing for that.
But are the libraries in G-Milks also in the interlibrary loan system?
To my knowledge, they are, but I would, I would, I believe they are. Every, every library is in the, involved in the state one.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, I want to have you on a few items. So she is also cutting another fifty-eight-hundred from office supplies, as well, another two thousand from the general expenses. So it's not just ten thousand, it's seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars that they're cutting out of their budget to help put this forward. So it's not just ten.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it's not covering the full cost. And it's just going to keep magnifying exponentially over the years, and then with the need of more staff. I'm just really concerned that this is more of a want and not a need.
It's a want for the community, absolutely.
Mr. Campbell, sorry, I was going to say, Mr. Campbell, can I ask a clarifying question? On the very first page that you have the tax rate calculations, it says that approximately sixty thousand dollars in appropriations is equal to one cent on the tax rate. So does this mean if we use that same type of mathematical calculation that the forty-one thousand dollars for G-Milks is worth less than one cent per each taxpayer?
Wait.
Seven tenths.
Seven tenths of a cent.
Yep.
Yes.
For each tax, from each taxpayer for G-Milks?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Times a thousand.
For like a six hundred thousand dollar home, it'd be four dollars and twenty cents.
Yep.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Aaron.
You're welcome.
Okay. Please proceed. All right. I'll jump right to the lion's hall.
You're going to jump on the lion's hall?
Jump right to the lion's hall.
Okay.
I didn't know you were Superman.
So So how much do you want to spend? Three and a half million dollars? Because nobody up here does.
No. That seems to be a consensus. So, um, I'd like to propose, we'd like to propose, I apologize, we'd like to propose, Mr. Town Manager and, and Mr. Chair, that instead of putting a warrant article forward where we're going to spend five hundred thousand dollars on a lion's hall to make some progress there, we would rather see that become a question in the style of what we did with water last year and, and solicit the voters' input on what they want to do with the lion's hall rather than attaching monetary value to it right now.
That's perfectly fine with me.
Well, no, I mean, here, here's the issue. What the issue is, is we don't know what the five hundred thousand dollars is for.
Agreed.
That's what we've asked them to come back and tell us. So we don't know what the five hundred thousand dollars is for. We don't know what they intend to do with it. We don't know what condition the hall will be in. But what they have told us is, is if we ignore it another year, it's, we take a chance of it being in more disrepair. So what I want, what I'd like to find out is, is I'd like to get the question answered we asked the last time. What is the five hundred thousand dollars for? I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, so Mr. Mr. Chairman, um, and I, you're exactly right. I mean, uh, that is, that is certainly an option and it's something that we did with water as, as Mr. Cassidy pointed out. But there are, you know, detriments associated with that which you, which you outlined. Mr. Wally is actually, uh, out of state and unable to be here tonight on a pre-existing obligation. But I have spoken with Weston and Sampson. He did some work to answer that question in advance. And I can tell you that, so I had a conversation with Mr. Tenley, uh, who's been before this council and the Budget Committee before. And, you know, he, he provided some numbers to answer this question. But the problem, the problem is really this. So we could, we, as he explained it to me, we could segregate off the floor, for example, and fix the floor and maybe that costs fifty thousand dollars. But then we still have a, a building that is not ADA accessible. We still have a building that has a substandard electrical system. We still have a building that doesn't have fire protection, which is, isn't strictly required, but it probably is, is, would make sense for a building like this. And so the recommendation from, from Weston and Sampson and from Mr. Wally is that that five hundred thousand dollars could be used to finalize, update and finalize what was referred to as the basis of design. And that is a series of due diligence investigations, including a structural assessment, evaluation of the front crawl space, the main hall. The, the north wall has some structural problems. Obviously, the floor has some structural
Stop, stop. I, I want to hear what the engineers have to say anymore. They got us to three and a half million dollars. Okay? Here's the question. The question is very simple. I, what does it take, put the, I'm, I'm, I'll write these down and I'll give them to you. What does it take to put the electrical system up to code? Okay? What is the minimum we can do for fire without sprinkler for fire protection? What does it cost for the floor? No access to the second floor? And what is, be able to do to keep the building in a condition in which we can be able to not have it fall down? All right? I'm not an engineer. What I don't want to hear is, is we have to do more studies. No more studies. We have a building inspector. We have a town engineer. We have volunteers in this community. Can we please have someone go over there and tell us what they can do for five hundred thousand dollars? I mean, I'm, I'm, and I'm sorry if I'm asking so bluntly and directly.
No, that's, I'm a blunt and direct person, as you know, Mr. Chairman, so I'm perfectly happy to
Please go over there and find out what is it. Take the fire chief, take Public Works, Mr. Trotter over there, he loves engineering. Take the building inspector who's like built half the stuff in town and half the houses. Okay? Get an electrician who likes us and go over there and say, okay, what can we actually do so that we can make this building so it's functional? So that we can figure out whether or not we can and we can't do something for five hundred thousand dollars? If we can't do something, then let's go to the ballot and see if people want to pay three million dollars. Okay? But let's go, let's go use the talent we have and go find out what we can and we can't do. No more Weston and Sampson. Okay? No more three and a half million dollars. That's what I'm asking for. You guys good with that?
We're going to do the research.
Yeah, I, I, I want to know what our options are in general. If, should we sell it?
You want, you want, no, we're not selling it. We don't sell our property.
Well, whatever. Should we tear it down and put something else in its place?
That's three and a half million dollars.
I'm not suggesting anything. That, but then why are we going to put money into rehabbing what's there if we're going to tear it down and put something else in its place?
It's the original Morrison House. It's the history of the town. Okay? I'll buy the rail for the people who want to tear it down, who will get run out of town.
I, I understand.
This is, well, we're a New England town, that's the original town hall, has the original town vault in it. All right? If you don't want to save it, don't save it. But there's a lot of people in this town that I think would tie themselves to the building if you try to tear it down.
Our treasurer said last meeting.
First of all, I'm not suggesting anything, any, any path. I'm suggesting that we let the voters decide what the path is. And that, and, and
The voters elected the town council to decide. So what I want is information so the town council can make a, a, a good decision on whether or not we should save that building. And should I save the lion's hall? Ann Champa, should we save the lion's hall?
Is this public?
No, you're, you're
It is right now.
You're the town historian. Should we save the lion's hall or not, or should we, or should we tear it down?
Ann Champa, Twenty-Eighth Wedgwood Drive. Are you nuts?
Thank you, Ann.
You know the history of this town? We just celeb- We just celebrated the three-hundredth anniversary of Londonderry recently. Do you know the history of this town and the history of this building? It was Reverend William Morrison's meeting house. That means
No responding, we're done.
Let me respond, please, because you're painting this, you're painting this that I want to, that I want to destroy the lion's hall. And that is not the case.
You said, should we tear it down?
I said
You want to know why? Because of the history of this town and the importance of that building.
Okay, Ann, Ann, you made your point.
Excuse me.
Good job.
Wait a second, I want to say something. It stood on the hill on Max Farm, on the corner of Hardy and Pillsbury Road. Imagine that hill where that lookout is presently, which is part of Woodmont. That's where that building stood before.
And we moved it.
And, and it was the Presbyterian Meeting House for Reverend William Morrison, who died in eighteen eighteen, by the way. And it was moved to the center of town. And that addition was added on in the front of it later on. And so we've got a very long history with that building. And if anybody tells me that you want to tear it down or sell it, I'll be there with John chained to it. You'll have to pry us away from there.
I understand. And I'm not suggesting those things. I'm suggesting that we have a clear path forward. And I feel like we don't have a clear path forward right now. Meaning that we have this, we're, we're talking about spending five hundred thousand dollars. We don't know what that does. We also, I also think that if we spend five hundred thousand dollars, that's committing us for more than five hundred thousand dollars in the long run.
It's stabilizing the building.
I understand, but it's
And that's why we're going to ask the questions and find out what's required from the talent we have in-house. No more engineers. Let's find out what it is we can and we can't do from the people we work with every day and we trust.
Okay, let me reiterate that I am not saying what we should do with that building. I'm saying we should have clear what our paths and options are. Are we on the same page?
Uh, yeah, but I think we ought to talk to Preservation, um, I should say, New Hampshire Preservation Alliance. They're the experts on this. They will, they already agreed to come down to town to take a look at the building. I talked to them.
Good, have them call me.
Oh, oh, no problem. Tomorrow.
Do they have funds to help with historic preservation?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Ann.
Does this alliance have funds to help with historic preservation?
It's not the lion's hall. It's owned by the town.
No, the Historic Alliance she was just talking about.
I understand, you just mentioned the Historic Preservation Alliance. Is that a group that could possibly help?
They're going to call me and I'm going to ask them.
New Hampshire Preservation Alliance.
I, and they're going to call me and I'm going to ask them. Thanks for painting me as the bad guy here, John.
She's going to have to walk the
Hey, listen, I didn't tell you to say all those things. Let's get some answers from the people we trust and find out whether or not, no more Weston and Sampson. I'm tired of listening to people who want to spend our money. Okay? Let's find out from the people we trust. And if they come forward and they say, you know what? This is something we just can't do. Let's, let's get to the bottom of this thing once and for all. We fixed the floor once ten years ago. I'm not advocating for doing it again. But let's get some people we trust and figure out the right thing to do. That's what I'm advocating for.
Well, and I think also the good end of that is having, in a way, a third-party review against Weston Sampson's numbers. And having our local people actually put forth, you know, does this actually make sense with what Weston Sampson's saying or not? And so we actually have them go out there, it'll actually are they, are their numbers per, you know, out of whack or are they, can we get it done for way cheaper?
I've known our town engineer for twenty years.
Yeah.
There's nobody more black and white than him.
Uh, oh, I agree. I completely agree.
Since, since the Budcom's on the crosshairs, why are we increasing? Why are we increasing their budget by ninety-nine dollars?
Yeah.
Ah, well, pull that out of there.
It was requested that we increase it. That way they are able to purchase items for their meetings or for themselves, such as business cards or prior to these, the placards, things of that nature.
The Budget Committee wants to spend money?
No, it was really about the placards. It's really about the placards.
Before we had these placards, the, there were various Budget Committee members that would have pieces of paper with their name on it. So in order to look a little more professional, we would do that to allow us to purchase those items for them.
Thank you.
I really don't want to go next. Somebody else jump in.
I'll, I'll go. I have some questions for the fire department, please. We don't have impact fees. I, my understanding is that we used to have impact fees and we are negotiating developer agreements with new constructions. Are those benefits for those development agreements being budgeted as revenue somewhere? Can we bring back to impact fees for the fire department, police department, things like that? When these new developments come to town? How are we realizing the increased needs of the town? But I'm thinking specifically the fire department. How, how are we managing that?
So we don't, we don't have impact fees.
Yep.
We used to, and that's a whole nother discussion that the chairman probably has a pretty good understanding on. I can tell you that the intent behind it, I think, is very sound. Because as business comes into town, it, it does have a draw on the town services. And so you get together and you do studies and you come up with, you know, for example, the Elliot Urgent Care. That will generate, you know, X amount of calls a year. So what can the town, what can the town of Londonderry get for that draw on that service? But, Mr. Chairman, you would have far more institutional knowledge on that one.
Impact fees were something that was in place that were, um, not well-used or managed. Resulted in, um, a, uh, forensic audit ordered by the court. And, uh, there was some, some changes happened here in the town and, uh, we returned all the impact fees because, um, the, the law is not really well-written.
Okay.
And so what we moved to was, was things called development agreements.
Yes.
So we moved to development agreements so that we could actually manage it on the front end versus managing it on the back end. So for example, there's a pilot for New Balance, which we went to the groundbreaking for today, in which we have a development agreement in which they're going to pay us, you know, a fee in lieu of taxes.
Okay.
So it's, um, that, that's more complicated because of loans through the state and nonprofits and who owns the land and the airport leases land and people build on the land that the airport leases. But it's, um, the impact fees managed on the back end are historically, not well, I guess the best way to say it is not well-done to, not only here, but in other places.
Okay.
So, but it was millions of dollars we returned. That frankly wasn't our money.
Right.
So it's, there's a whole court case on it and everything.
So we had a develop, like a developer that sued us because of the results of the forensic audit, correct?
Well, they sued us and that caused the forensic audit.
Okay.
So it's, um, and it's something that probably was historically a good idea. People thought SB two was a good idea in default budgets, I happen to disagree. But, you know, but it's something that the legislature probably needs to
Yeah.
Give us better guidance on. I mean, you're, what's your point of view?
I completely agree. I mean, I, so as you point out, Mr. Chairman, it's something that's not easy to administer. I think it would, it would really, we would have to look hard at whether we're set up in the Finance Department to, uh, and, and multi- and the Planning and Economic Development Department to, to administer a program like that because you don't want to get it wrong. There are also
Go to jail if you get it wrong.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, yes, I get that.
I think that it's a very, and I'll, I'll let the Assistant Town Manager jump in if she has anything to add. But there, you can't use it for, for everything that you think, you would think you might be able to use it for. There's a set, there's a set of statutory things that you can use it for, mostly public facilities. I think that they are, they're, I mean, they're probably like traditionally best tied to kids in schools. And as you know, Mr. Chairman, um, we, we have a declining school population. And so, you know, th- those impacts from our, our developments are, are limited. But you're, you're exactly right. I mean, it set off not only, uh, a court case and, um, everything that went with it. It set off, um, you know, uh, costs of, of that litigation of the forensic audit, which is probably more expensive than legal services. And it's just something that I think a lot of people have a lot of heartburn about even however many years later.
Okay.
Yeah, the forensic audit at that time was somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand, somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, impact fees, I mean, are, you know, I mean, the, the law has to be structured in, in a way that makes it easier to use them. What would happen is, is you would have all these impact fees and all this money. It's not your money and it would sit in these accounts. And then sometimes it would sit there too long and it wouldn't get returned. And then the way that the law was written, you couldn't apply the money even if you wanted to, even if you wanted to because it wasn't exactly the way the impact fee law was written.
Yep.
So these development agreements
You can do everything.
We can do everything and don't have to, don't have to follow the impact rules.
And I'll just, I'll just add, Mr. Chairman, I've, I've worked in municipalities that have impact fees. And in my experience, those fees are not an accurate reflection on the true financial impact and cost. The development agreements allow us to have an accurate agreement in real time, if you will, that will fill that, you know, financial strain or need, should it happen.
So for example, let's say, let's say, you know, let's say a full-service hospital wanted to build in town. We would be able to go to them and say, okay, well, if you want to do this, this is how it's going to affect our department. These, this is the agreement that we would have with you to do this. And we would have to hire five more firefighters. We have to hire ten more paramedics. In the case of Woodmont, in their development agreement is written that once they reach a certain point of where, where service will change, which may happen with the Baldwin, they have to build a, a, a public safety building at Woodmont and help us fund it. They, they have to pay for it, build it, and then they have to help us fund the services. So that's built, that's built into their development agreement.
So it does, so if their development agreement says, say, for example, we, if we build eight new apartment buildings and we are required to build that public safety building, what's to stop them from building seven? And then them not happening to build that public safety building?
It's all built on a mathematical calculation that we built into the agreement.
Okay, got it.
So So-
Got it.
Also what's built into the agreement is, is that we have to build a school to support what they're doing. They have to sell us the land at X number of dollars below market cost.
Okay, got it.
So there was a, that, that one's actually a, a pretty good one to, to look at from the standpoint of what we were able to do. And also understand under the United States Supreme Court decision, we can't ask them to do anything.
Okay.
Well, no, no, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we can ask them to do things, we can't make them do anything.
Got it.
So you have to come to a collective agreement on it. You can't require it.
Okay.
The impact fees, it's, it's, they need to change the law.
It's actually more beneficial to look at a project before it comes to town and provide them with what our recommendations are for assistance if they were to bring that development into town, right? Let's say they were to, a developer were to come and want to put up, you know, 17 apartment buildings of, you know, four, four stories, right?
First, we would tell them to go away.
Right. But, but we could, at the planning point, when that developer comes forward, the fire department could say, uh, that many buildings of that size would put an undue burden on our ladder trucks, let's say. We need you to cover the cost of a ladder truck in order to bring this into town.
Okay, got it.
That would be part of a developer's agreement.
Okay, got it.
Does that make sense?
That does make, that makes a lot of sense, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're just looking for creative ways to try and have the, have the tax burden be more on commercial and industrial and ease the tax burden on the residents.
Yeah.
But it seems like that's already happening.
Sadly, it's going to keep going that way, because the way valuations are working and everything, commercial doesn't move as fast as residential. So right now we're at like a 60/40 split, where we used to be close to 50/50.
Hopefully some of the new industry coming in will help with that.
Well, that's, I mean, that, just to your point, Mr. Chairman, we were up, uh, on Pen Gill Road today and that's the perfect area for that kind of, uh, development. It's contained up there, uh, the impacts on, you know, the center of town are, 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 are less. And, uh, we're looking at millions of dollars in tax revenue over the next 10 years that New Balance is going to be bringing in. So there's still, uh, there's like a million square feet in the pipeline, um, in the next couple of years, few years up there. Um, there's already 4 million square feet, a quarter billion dollars of value, and that's all value that we would have to be raising from residential taxpayers if we didn't, if we weren't fortunate enough to have it. So that's really where we're focusing a lot of our efforts. Um, the other, to your point about, you know, how can we, uh, ease the burden on taxpayers? Going after new revenue, uh, wherever we can find it, interest revenue, that's, that's been helping us out recently. But also motor vehicle revenue, and that's dependent on a healthy, uh, town clerks department, a, a town clerks department that can, uh, take that traffic. And so that's something that we're looking at as well.
And to give you an example, you know, they're, they're going and visiting the rental car companies directly because state law says they garage in Londonderry, they register in Londonderry. So that's something that's, the clerks actually go out and get the, the things to bring them in.
Yep.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, that does, yeah. Um, another question I have is, um, ambulances and EMS services, um, are we billing residents when they have ambulatory services? Um, and if so, when they pay their bills, where does that money go? Because if it doesn't go back into the fire department and it goes into a general fund, for example, can we maybe take some of that money instead and just reinvest it into the fire department or how does that, how does that work?
That's a good question. I'm going to have, uh-
So I'll hit a couple of those points.
That's a really good question, Kate.
I'm going to wait and feel Justin's heat on the side of my face. Uh, so the fire department does-
Fire guy, you can take the heat.
The fire department does provide ambulance service. Um, the tax base supports the ability for us to have the ambulances in the station and the people in the ambulances.
Yes.
We then, when it goes on a call, we bill for the service provided. Um, and we contract through a third-party company in order to recoup our costs for that particular service. That money goes into the general fund
Okay.
as revenue. But there's also a budgeted amount every year in each budget that we say we're going to get. And anything in excess of that will just go as a surplus to the, the undesignated fund balance.
Okay.
How'd I do?
So you did a great job. I just know, because I've had a couple of these questions recently.
Actually, only one exception to that, that's the cable revenue. But cable, when cable gets revenue, the money has to be spent with them and with the school, right?
The 32.5 that we received for, um, yes. It has to go into the capital reserve to be spent for equipment upgrades and a portion of that goes to the school as well.
Yeah.
Um, going back to the ambulance, we currently budget 675,000. Based on the old valuation, that's about 13 and a half cents.
Okay.
Um, looking at the entire fire department, that's roughly covers 8% of the fire department.
Okay.
Um, that being said, it's, it's the communications, fire prevention, all the other services, it covers 8% of their entire budget. So yes, it, it does go to the general fund, but it, if you look, it's actually in the revenue portion in, uh, in the fire department revenue.
Okay, got it.
Um, but it is technically the, everything in the general fund, whether it's building, fire, uh, anywhere else, it, it all goes into the general fund, but we put each department in there, so we're able to show what it is.
Okay.
If we were to remove that, based on last year's valuations, you'd be looking at a 13 and a half cent increase, which on a $400 or $400,000 home is about, I want to say, $54 per year.
Okay.
That you would see the increase go on.
Okay.
Um, essentially, as Bruce basically did a great job explaining of how we fund it with that aspect, if they show up and they don't transport you, you don't pay. There's no bill. It's the transportation is where you get, you get the fee. And it's allowing the utilization, those that utilize it to pay some of the costs rather than just the taxpayers of Londonderry.
Yes.
Because we have, the airport's a perfect example, if somebody gets transferred from the airport, they can be from out in Georgia.
Yep.
If we have a zero, that means the taxpayers are now paying for that individual to be transported.
Yep.
Um, and to the best of my knowledge, I looked into it a couple of years ago, we cannot segregate, uh, from Londonderry residents versus non-Londonderry residents, it's-
And, and believe it or not, we do have a very large transient population of people moving through town that we, that utilize the emergency services, that get billed that are not residents of town. Um, and additionally, um, I believe Deputy Chief Heinrich, uh, presented, um, a presentation to the town council, uh, earlier this year about us raising the fees of the ambulance service, right? So it's one of the things we're looking at, is we can raise our rates to be more in line with some of our surrounding towns to, to generate more revenue from the ambulance service. But ultimately, we get credited for what we do on an average, right? So we can raise it, but it won't have an impact on our operational department for that year. It would be further years after we change the, what we average for, for revenue.
Okay, great.
Keep me honest here, Bruce, AMR is charging about $2,500 a trip in Manchester?
It's, yeah, it's ridiculous, but I mean, you can, you can charge whatever you want, right? But payers will only pay what they say they're going to pay, um, right? Medicare, which is a, a large component of, of what we transport, are people who have Medicare or Medicaid. And the government sets government rates, so they'll only pay what, what they say they're going to pay. Um, private subscribe, you know, like, private services will pay, um, a little bit higher. And then you get into the privates, private ambulance services. You're on the hook for that bill, whether you can pay it or not.
Yep.
So they'll actually attach, you know, financial liens to you in order to get their money. Whereas the town, we provide the service and we send you a bill. But we don't, we don't recoup the bill if they don't pay it, we, we have to, you know, write it off as bad debt service.
That's not entirely true.
Well, we'll, we'll work with people.
Correct.
Yes, 100% we work with people. Um, there, we do have a collection agency, should individuals refuse to reach out or refuse to work with us to come to a conclusion. As I tell everybody that calls and asks for assistance or anything, we're not looking to take food off your table. We're looking to cover the cost as much as we can to limit the impact on the Londonderry taxpayers. Um, we, we especially, we have a lot of situations where Bruce mentioned that, uh, we can charge X amount, doesn't mean the insurance company's going to pay it. Um, we are not in contract with various insurance, actually, I don't think we're in contract with any insurance company because historically what will happen is the insurance company will say, oh, you're billing us 1,000? We're going to pay 100, have a great day, see you later, no discussion. Meanwhile, if we aren't in contract, we bill 1,000, the insurance company says they're only paying 100, the person calls Coastal, our billing company, and they explain to them that they have to essentially go back to the insurance company to have them explain why, and magically that $100 is now 900, 950. Um, and that's, that's been the case for quite some time as to why we're not in contract with those vendors.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, and then my last question is about the additional four paramedics for the fly car. Um, would, when we're talking about the fly car and the new paramedics, do we have a total of what the Warren article dollar amount would be? So would it include the expenses for the salaries, including any type of vacation coverage for them? Um, and then the second part of that is, um, will we hire, we're hiring paramedics who will be cross-trained as firefighters, correct?
That's, it's a good question and it shows that we didn't do a good enough job explaining. So it's not that we're hiring paramedics, which would be a higher cost for the town.
Yep.
We're taking the paramedics we currently have on staff
Yep.
and moving them where we can, four of them, to the fly car.
Okay.
And then hiring firefighters who come in at the lowest rate and then can train up to whatever EMS service that they can, that they can achieve.
Got it.
Hopefully we, we do capture some paramedics on that, but there again, one of the reasons why we need to do the fly cars is because paramedics just aren't around.
Yep.
So as a department, we're faced at training the people in-house, sending them to paramedic school to get that additional education and then come back to us and, you know, be that highest level of pre-hospital care. So it's not that we're hiring four paramedics.
Okay.
If that, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Okay, awesome.
One, one of the best things about the-
If you're available, you would hire.
Yeah.
One of the best things about the fire service is that, uh, all of our personnel are multi-dimensional. Meaning, you know, they have some training as it relates to EMS, whether that be EMT, EMT Advanced, or paramedic. Um, all of our personnel are certified firefighters, Fire 1, Fire 2. All of our personnel have additional certifications, whether it's hazardous materials technician, whether it's confined space rescue, whether it's ICE rescue. So when you look at what makes up your fire department, the people that are, that are staffing those positions, they're not just riding around on fire trucks every day. They, as Counselor Dun saw, they'll move from three different pieces of apparatus throughout the day in order to affect the service that they need to affect for the day. The, the fly car concept gives us the ability to take our most valuable asset as it relates to pre-hospital EMS care, put them into a vehicle where they're not going to be dedicated to going out of town to the hospital for patients that don't require advanced level of support. It would be like every time you felt a twinge in your chest, you go see a cardiologist. No, you go see your primary care first, and then if you require further level of care, you get referred to a specialist. That's essentially what paramedics are, they're specialists. And by sending them on every ambulance to every hospital, every time a patient needs a transport, it's not the most effective use of a resource.
Yep, that makes sense, thank you.
So back to the first part of the question though, what's the number for the Warren article, do we know? Maybe that's a Justin question?
It, it would be, and this is where we would be able to kind of discuss, uh, one of the benefits of how we budget our insurance now, where it's all grouped together. Um, whether or not we want to have these, this Warren article reflect four family plans or kind of split it out that way, if we were to reflect four family plans at step one firefighter, you'd be looking at about 465,000-ish.
So that's our worst-case scenario?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, that's why the way we budget insurance now, where it's all in one group, we could somewhat safely lower that down to a two-person or maybe do one of each, where we have a buyout, single, two-person family.
Okay.
Which drastically decreases the cost instantly. Um, the salaries with benefits, or salaries with NHRS and Medicare is about 277.
Okay.
The dental and medical insurance is, uh, 181,000.
Okay.
But we should probably budget for the worst-case scenario.
That would be the worst case at that point of, yeah.
And if someone is a single person or, you know, just has kids or doesn't have kids yet, it may be a savings to the town at some point.
Correct.
Okay. And we had, um, trying to remember the numbers. We have 12 paramedics at one point and we're down to eight, or it's, it's something like that?
So we have, we have a mix, right? So traditionally, 2006, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, we hired firefighter paramedics, right? Because that's what we required. Um, the paramedic pool has significantly dried up and what we've also seen is, um, your paramedics are now into leadership roles. So, you know, paramedics are lieutenants, paramedics are battalion chiefs. Um, you know, 2008, 9, 10, 11, 12, I was one of the paramedics riding around on the ambulances. I'm a battalion chief now, I don't ride around on the ambulances. So we haven't backfilled those people that used to ride around on the ambulances all the time because there's no paramedics to find. So where we ha, where we can hire paramedics, we've hired paramedics. Where we've been able to hire people that are just paramedics and don't have firefighter training, we've hired them and put them through fire school so that they are that multi-dimensional, uh, employee that we talked about. Um, but, you know, we're down to, you know, right now, I believe we're down to seven or eight firefighter paramedics, and we have almost as many lieutenant paramedics. But your job role changes. You become, instead of that entry-level firefighter, paramedic treating patients on the street, your job role as a lieutenant becomes more multi-dimensional on the entire crew and the entire scene. Um, so we use them as paramedics as necessary, but they're not necessarily the paramedics that get on the ambulance and go to the hospital.
Okay, got it.
Okay, um, just for educational purposes, we have defibrillators in all of our, in every town vehicle now, right? We have defibrillators.
All, all, uh, engines, all ambulances?
Town vehicles, public works trucks.
All emergency vehicles.
Police cars.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Everyone has one now, they've all been trained, right?
That, I, I don't know, I can't speak for outside of the fire.
We, we, we bought them, they're supposed to be there, they're supposed to be trained. Takes, you guys told me, four minutes, you got to get hit with a defibrillator, right?
Or good quality, high, good high-quality CPR while we're waiting for the defibrillator.
So we put the defibrillators at all the recreational places, they're, they're finally over at the bandstand. They're in all the schools and every place else, they're in the public works trucks, the fire, the police truck vehicles and the fire vehicles. All right? Town voted on them, we paid for them, can you guys let us know where we stand from a training status standpoint of everyone's trained and ready to go?
Roger that.
Could I just add one thing on the Warren article amount?
Yes.
So these four, so the, they're all going to have vacation.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to be manned with overtime hours.
Mm-hmm.
Will that be contemplated in the Warren article amount? Or otherwise, I think your overtime line's probably going to be understated for the discipline.
That's something that usually adjusts in the budget with the salaries, right?
Yeah, so ideally with these positions, um, you won't see a one-to-one, but ideally with these positions, you'd actually see overtime decrease because you have four additional people that are on staff to cover should somebody take a vacation day. You don't have to call somebody in to make sure you meet minimum requirements. Um, the 465 that I gave you does not include that aspect. Well, we budget them for 2,184 hours. That's what they're scheduled to work throughout the year. Whether they use their vacation time or sick time or personal time, it's still 2,184 hours throughout the year. Um, in terms of the overtime, that would be difficult to add into this one because ideally it should, you should see a slight decrease because you're upping the staffing.
Yeah, but you're upping the staff, that means you have more people that have vacation time to take.
Right, you're upping the requirement as well, so your requirement for each battalion would be 17 now, right?
No.
Sorry.
Oh, we'd, we'd love 17, put that on the Warren article. So our-
Oh, 17, huh?
Yeah, so our shift-
You're a generous guy!
Our, our shift staffing right now is 12 firefighters, which includes all ranks. That's firefighter to battalion chief, there's 12 on duty.
This would bring that up to 13.
This would bring us up to 13.
So I think what Ryan's trying to say is that now that the requirement's 13, you won't, you're not gaining a body that would allow a decrease in overtime, you're gaining a ba, a body that would not allow a decrease in overtime because your requirement went up, does that make sense?
So I-
It does, and that's where I would defer to Chief Bill, whether or not we staff at 13 and require 12 or we staff at 13 and require 13.
So we went through this about 10 years ago when we were running seven or eight on the shift. And what was happening is, is that we weren't really able to, we weren't able to send mutual aid out because we would be, we would be saying, sending out two-man crews on mutual aid and they would just look at us and just say, go away. You know, because there's, there's nothing you could do. So we were running about $700,000 or $800,000 a year on overtime when Chief O'Brien took over. And what the council told them was, is that we're not going to run with less than 10 anymore because it was just, it reached a point of dangerous. So what was happening is they were going to fire and they were running what they called dead man pump. So they'd start the pump and then two of them would go in and they leave the pump running unattended. So we made a decision back then to blow the overtime budget out and, you know, just make sure the people were safe. That's when we started going to the ballot and adding firefighters. So what hap, what I'm going to say next is, is that I'm going to ask the finance director if he can give me a staggered, you know, Warren article. So I hire two and I wait six months and I hire another two. Because if we can keep it at 12, to your point, with vacations and then ease them into 13 until we can get these people trained and then even the schedule out would be, you know, another way to look at it. It's an excellent point.
Yeah.
But it's, but that's, that's how we got where we are.
And, and to answer, to answer your question, Ryan, you're absolutely correct. If we have more people, there's going to be an increase. But you have to remember, these are all entry levels, the amount of time they have to take and the amount of time it takes them to accrue is, is very limited, right? So though there is an increase, it's, it's very minimal, and because our department by and large is extremely young, our overtime is down from what it was when, three, four, five years ago, and we had top-step 25-year veterans, right? So if you look at the data, our overtime numbers are lower, well, not this year because we're filling open positions, but had we been- but had we been full, our overtime would be lower than it had been probably the last five, six, yeah, seven years, and even salaries because of the age switch in the department.
The other thing is, is those four brand-new people, they have to accrue over the next year. So, they don't just get two weeks of vacation and, you know, a week of sick time when they start on. They get nothing, and they have to earn up over that next year to get their accruals. So, it's a staggered, you know, it's not like the day they start, they can take, you know, right?
Correct.
They have to, it's accrued time.
Right. Un- unlike some places where you start and they say, "Here's your two weeks of vacation and your two weeks of sick time."
Yeah.
They don't get that, right? So it's, it's exactly, it's a stagger.
Contractually based, so.
Yeah, what I sort of explained to the chief when he took over is, I said, "Go walk around, go look around, you're the old guy." These are the old guys.
Well, we like to refer to ourselves as more just refined now, not necessarily old yet.
Alright Bruce, thank you.
Tell you some stories about Bruce.
But it- I don't think we have time for that.
Alright, so we're good with fire?
Yep.
We'll switch to police.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, going to Ryan's question there, if we are requiring thirteen at that point, what I would do is I would take the average overtime for the firefighter levels, and apply those hours to the four additional people to add those to the warrant article.
Thank you.
So you would adjust for that in the warrant article then?
If that's the way that we're going, we're requiring thirteen, yes. I would add that in there.
I'd also like a number based on a split hire.
So six months?
Six months, six months, give us a number on a split hires for consideration.
Alright Chief.
So before I begin, can I just say if you go missing?
You have a prime stuff.
And secondly, uh, man, seriously, if anything ever happens to Fritz Weatherby, you are my vote. This woman is my vote, I say get her up there and take over Fritz Weatherby. Anyway.
She might have competition for my wife.
Chief, if you're gonna, you, so Dan Bouchard, uh, you still here? He asked some questions earlier, um, what, uh, did I say your name wrong?
No, he's-
You call him Dan.
In Mr. Bouchard.
So can you, uh-
About the captain?
Yeah.
So, yeah, let me back up, uh, Mr. Chair. So, as Dan pointed out, uh, some years ago, it was approved by former Chief Hart, um, to take over and start the professional standards and legal bureau, in which at that time, we were adopting the Kalia, um, gold standard in law enforcement, which you heard me briefly remark. Back then, a former town manager, the former town council members approved and adopted to take on that program. And I can't speak for what was presented, um, I wasn't, I was here, but I was not part of the decision-making body. But what I can tell you is that, what I know now, what I didn't know as a young captain, was the amount of work that that one man does to maintain the Kalia accreditation status for your police department is overwhelming. Now, it's like anything else, when we're inexperienced, we don't know, we jump all in, we go for it. And with time and experience like you all have up here, your first time sitting up there until today, you gain more knowledge, and you understand more. With that position, we understand that that is a lot of responsibility for one man. A lot of agencies have a Kalia accreditation assistant manager, we don't have that. Um, so, well, yes, that position, as Dan pointed out, was a captain's role. And yes, at that time, Captain Morrison was going to help out with prosecution. We don't have time for him to do that. Yes, uh, as Dan pointed out, he went to law school. That was in the works before he became a captain, that was in the works before he became the accreditation manager. And continuing education is one of the things that we pride ourselves on here in this police department. We put these things out there for our employees to excel, so you guys have a better product with your employee. We put those things out there in a collective bargaining agreement that get approved on, so we're more competitive with other agencies who are for that. So for me to stand here and tell you that I need to make a captain, uh, or as Dan alluded, uh, make a captain go and, and do a prosecution's job, then we have to ask ourselves, so are we gonna be full-time Kalia certified, or are we just gonna waste three years of hard work so I can reframe, uh, reuse him, uh, as a prosecutor? And I don't think that makes sense. Um, I heard Maureen mention, uh, earlier, there's wants and needs. Do you guys remember, I said that last year? Wouldn't waste your time, wouldn't waste your hard-earned tax dollars on something I know that we didn't need. So to answer your, uh, to answer Mr. Bouchard's, uh, point, Mr. Chairman, uh, I think it's a need for our organization.
Okay, so that being said, um, you talked about Mr. Malaguti, how you've been, you know, things move around within the town, and like, you know, we move money from planning to HR, wherever, wherever we're moving those hires. Is that an option for the PD? Don't bark at me, but we have sixty-seven positions, I think we still are around seven that are vacant.
I have, I'm at sixty-one, I believe I told you last time.
Okay.
And I've got four, uh, coming on, so I have two non-certified and two certified.
Okay. Is it possible to take that fifty, sixty-seventh position and, and change it so that it can be the prosecutor?
I mean, the answer is ye- yes, it's possible, it's a, it's a, it's a, I mean, something that I, I think the chief should weigh in on in terms of the need for each, each of those sixty-seven patrol positions. That was something that we, we talked about last year at length. I think the feeling, the feeling was that, um, you know, patrol is taxed to the, to the limit, uh, is, is my understanding. Um, would patrol be taxed to the limit if we had sixty-six, but not sixty-seven? I, I can't answer that, but I do know that that's a huge problem the police department has been struggling with since at least I've worked for the town. Um, and-
A little tiny problem with police headcount. We made the decision to send police headcount, fire headcount, public works headcount to the ballot. The voters said, that's how many positions you need. We did the same thing with SROs. So if we're gonna change a position, and it's not that we can't, we really need to think about that from the standpoint of that, you know, that, that's a service cut. But, you know, and, and I'm good with it either way.
And I'm not advocating it, I'm just asking the questions.
It's also, it's taking a public safety position, and I mean, I have-
So I mean, if it's what you decide to do as the town manager, that's fine.
Yeah, and that's, that's right, I mean, we could, could we do that within the existing budget? Yeah, that's, that's something that we, I think we could do legally, I mean, that's the, that's the answer. But, um, as the chairman points out, it is taking a, a public safety person, and it's turning them into a courtroom person, a lawyer. And so I think that is a policy, uh, concern, a- as was pointed out. But, can it, can it be done? Sure, yeah, legally it can be done. Is it a good idea? That's something that, uh, I think we, we would wanna hear more from the police chief.
Yeah, I think-
Sorry, hold on, one, one more point about that.
It's all good, sir.
So if we, the catch is, if we put it on the ballot for, to add the prosecutor position, and it gets voted down, then we cannot move a, move, change the position?
Uh-
That is correct.
Uh-
I think so.
The, well, we could not, we could not-
Put a prosecutor in place. We could have someone who is currently in the police department prosecute cases.
Exactly, correct, yes.
Okay. I don't know how, I don't know how much I muddied the waters there, but there you go. In other words, if you have, if you have a police officer who goes to prosecutor's school and learns how to prosecute cases, they can go prosecute cases. I mean, I know, I know of other police officers who may or may not have their, their law degrees, they could be asked to go prosecute cases.
That's right, and that would depend on how the, how the warrant article spreads. But if the warrant article says, "Should we add a prosecutor?", it fails, then we can't add a pro- we can't add a prosecutor. If you say, "Can we, should we add a attorney prosecutor?", it fails, you can't add an attorney prosecutor, you could add a police prosecutor.
Yeah, or we could send town manager Malaguti back to be the police prosecutor. And he works twenty-four-seven anyway, so you know, it wouldn't matter.
If that's the option, I would take it.
Would we split his budget from the PD?
Absolutely.
At least have him do both.
Uh, I think he's quite busy too.
I like going to court.
Oh, that worries me.
I've never heard anybody say that.
Okay, so same question as fire then, what's the number on the warrant article for the prosecutor?
Yeah, so as we, I talked about last time, Mr. Cassidy, was that there, there'll be entry-level positions for an attorney.
Loaded labor, one thirty-five?
So, if we start the position at ninety-five thousand, is that what we roughly said before?
In that range, yeah.
Um, again, going family plans, you're looking at one sixty-five-five.
Okay. And again, I mean, I, I, I hear the creativity being asked, and, and, you're not muddying the water, sir. I, I hear you loud and clear, and I get it. Um, I, I think that, much like, the, the, the thought up there is that, "Well, if we have a vacant composition, let's just hire a prosecutor", is what's being insinuated, and then we'll use that money to pay for that. But then here's what happens, when I get to the point in my staffing levels to provide a service that's adequate and needed behind the ball on some things, such as detective division, uh, a community relations person, victim witness advocate, I'm gonna have to come back to you and say, "I need that position back." And I don't wanna do that to you guys, I don't wanna waste your time, and that's a quick fix right now, but this isn't a quick fix for today. I, I need a long-term solution to this problem. And, you know, there's nothing, as the chairman said, sure, I could train or send someone to prosecutor's school. Well, that's one other cop that's coming off the road to do a full-time job, spending time in the courts. I mean, if, if that's what the citizens want of their police department, less cops, uh, we're gonna have problems that fall in place when you have less cops out there. And when you have less cops out there, more crimes are gonna happen, and then I'm coming to you for a third prosecutor, because then we can't keep up. Right. That part was, uh, tongue-in-cheek, I don't need a-
No, I get it.
And we'd have to pay overtime for the pros- the position now prosecuting.
Okay, so, what's our plan if the answer's no? If, if we put it for, and I'm an advi- I advocate, I'm, I'm all about the-
Yeah, that's, that's an easy one, Mr. Cassidy.
I suggest we arrest less people.
As, as I stood here, uh, two weeks ago, just about, I told you we were at five hundred and something arrests, right? We're at six-twenty this morning. So we're gonna surpass what we projected. Can't stop arresting people, we don't wanna be that town, right? Where we just don't pay attention. But, um, you know, what happens is this, we, we're gonna march on. You guys direct, we follow suit. Um, we, we have, what I told you last time, is we have a per diem, she helps out when she can. And, uh, when our prosecutor was on her honeymoon, like, we had to, like, beg, because she has a full-time job and a part-time job. She is a busy woman providing, uh, legal services to, uh, other municipalities and her own firm. So, uh, we would, we would take the direction that's given. Um, I know, like I said before, the burden, as the town manager knows, it's a lot. And I would not wanna come back here next year and say to you, "Well, uh, now I need to hire two prosecutors, because I just buried this woman, and I came to you telling you I had a need, a need, and then we start the process all over again, I don't wanna do that."
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to kind of amplify a couple of the points that have been made, and, and I, I mean, I think I could, it's been a while since I was a prosecutor, but I think I have a pretty good idea. Um, this, you know, wha- what happens if the, if the answer is no? You know, the, the, the PD will make do, they always, they always do that, uh, but they, a couple of things will happen. One is, it, it, even when I left, we were getting to the point where we had to make tough decisions about what cases we prosecuted and what cases we didn't. And, um, you know, it tended to be the driving offenses that fall off, uh, that, that fall off at, you know, the, the prosecution list, right? It's the op afters, uh, there's a ton of them. Um, it's the, this, you know, speeding ca- minor speeding cases. Um, it's the, uh, you know, s- stuff like that, that we really just can't, can't prioritize. That's, you can, you can live with that. I mean, I think that, uh, you certainly wanna prosecute those cases as aggressively as you, as you can, uh, within reason, because it really does lead to safer roads, it does lead to, uh, people who aren't driving around without licenses, nobody wants that. Um, but more importantly, and the chief talked about this the last time, is the, the victim, um, outreach component to this. There is a statutory obligation, I believe there's a constitutional obligation in New Hampshire as well, to make outreach to victims of crimes. And, um, it's not every victim, right? It's not everybody who's in a fender bender, but it is, um, everybody who's a victim of certain, certain crimes. And, take it from me, this was, um, when you have a caseload of a hundred, what, two hundred, th- whatever the number is, cases that you're working on, um, and it includes JV, you know, he talked about arrests, it includes JV cases on top of that, and it includes, um, uh, a- any, any number of additional things, such as the administrative license suspension, um, cases that go with every DWE. Um, it really is reaching the point where, gosh, you know, we're not able to make as much outreach to the, to victims of violent crimes as we need to be. Um, and that's really where I see, I see the big, the big liabilities, I see the big concerns. Um, and that's really, I think, where we, we need to ask ourselves, have we reached the tipping point where we just can't provide that, uh, statutory and constitutional, uh, can't, we can't meet that obligation that we have?
Cool. Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Yes, I'm sorry. You guys are, uh, proposing ninety-five thousand for this position, is that in line with market? Is it going to attract the right person to be able to fill the role quickly enough?
So, I, I can tell you this, uh, Ted, that I, I've never hired a lawyer before. Um, but I, I, cops, that's my thing. Um, I, I don't know what a, 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 a young, inspiring attorney out of law school gets offered uh, out there in the private sector. I can tell you that the draw would be for, uh, municipality is the retirement option, you know, the benefit packages that come with that.
Or you might become town manager someday.
Well, your cards, right?
I'm not sure that was an improvement to what he was looking for. So, some days I think he wonders.
Yeah, and I, I think, to answer your question, Ted, you know, I, I think you gotta have a starting point somewhere, right? And if that range is in, within reason-
I guess the question is, did you consult anyone for the salary range for the position?
Yes, so vaguely, um, I bounce ideas off of the current prosecutor, and obviously the town manager. And that range is what an average, or a new starting-out prosecutor would be. There are other municipalities that are around us that are paying more than us, but I don't like to say that too loud, but they are. And, you know, could we fill it? I hope so.
Okay, great.
I can't sit here and say, "I'll have someone hired tomorrow." I don't have anybody on my radar, in case anybody thinks that we have somebody already pegged to this, I don't. But if it does get passed, and anybody up there knows somebody who may want to, uh, work for your police department and serve in the role of a prosecutor, I mean, hey, we'll interview anyone that's got those, uh, you know, experience on them.
Well, you answered my question, if you, you consulted different sources for the price range, I just wanna make sure that, that was done, thank you. Yeah, I mean, what you, is, in the law business in New Hampshire, litigators are people who appear in court, are, um, at the lower end of the spectrum now. There's not as many people who, who are lawyers who wanna go to court and wanna be litigators. There is a great desire for them, and if you, if that's the type of law you wanna do, cutting your teeth as a prosecutor is the fastest way to get there, so that you can get recognized. So that is, that is definitely something, if a, if someone's young and, and likes that kinda law, that will help them get recognized.
So, I'm going to pivot from police, so does anyone else have any other police question? Um, when he needs to come back here, if, uh, it ends up being more than ninety-five thousand?
Um, he would have to come back and tell us, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what we could do is, obviously I could work with you in the next, uh, well, obviously this week's kind of shot, but, uh, I can do some emails and correspond back and forth, uh, more directly with Justin, and, and get the exact numbers what our, I wanna say competitors, but the surrounding agencies are paying. And again, I, we're, we're trying to be in line and be competitive, so we, we get good quality candidates too.
Yeah, just wanna make sure he actually gets on.
Yeah, well, you know, we, we had a hard time last time. I mean, we, you know, we, we, we have a great reputation, as I said before, and that's carried us for a long time. But people wanna be recognized, and they wanna be paid appropriately too, so I appreciate you, you know, asking that, thank you.
We go with the chief? All set? Next item.
Alright, so for Department of Public Works, this is in regards to the replacement of the, um, DPW vehicles. We're discussing, we're trying to figure out, is this gonna be a separate warrant article? If so, how much, uh, will be the estimated cost? And if not, we saw the, uh, monies allocated for the roadway maintenance trust fund. The six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, would the monies be coming out of there? Or would this be a sep- separate warrant article to cover the replacement costs?
Go free, John.
Replacement costs are, are, uh-
Separate. So the roadway maintenance trust can't be used to replace those vehicles. Um, it can only be used for roadway maintenance. Um, if you look on the tax calculation sheet, you'll see what I'm anticipating the, uh, annual payment to be is about ninety thousand for those vehicles.
Okay, so that's the, that's the vehicle lease.
Correct.
Correct. That's the lease payment.
Okay.
That's what I'm anticipating for it to be.
And that would be the lease payment every year for how many years? And that would be the lease payment every year for how many years?
I believe added 10 years for those, based on their life expectancy. Seven years for the one-ton.
Okay, so how does that work as far as the warrant article goes? Do we have to put up a new warrant article every year? Or is this, or is that...
Once that's approved, it becomes part of the operating budget. Similar to the fire department engines we discussed earlier, where those will be falling off. This will, this will be added to the budget to continue forward until determined.
Okay, then that, then the $650 for the roadway maintenance, how does that compare to years past?
With the exception of last year, that's typically what's requested.
Okay.
Last year, we lowered it because we got a significant increase from the state that was unanticipated that offset the difference. And we wanted to try to lower the impact on the taxpayers because of that.
So probably about 15 years ago? We started doing $1 million a year for roadway maintenance? And then we switched to the $650,000 about seven years ago?
Correct.
So...
Thereabouts.
Many of the surrounding towns were putting out warrant articles for $10, $20, $30 million to do roadway maintenance. So we came up with a plan of, "Let's do $1 million a year, because you can't work off $30 million in one year anyway." So about halfway into it, and we started doing the math on it and saying, "Well, it's actually cheaper if we do it this way, where we take the money from the state and we do the $650,000, and we actually save the money on the interest." And I think we figured out that we would, like, pay for two or three years that way without having to take the bond and having to pay the interest on the bonds. And we've been, the $650,000 we've been carrying for about seven or eight years, right?
Since...
We can do less with it, but it's about the same amount of money.
Been a while.
It ticked up for a little bit. It started lower once the roadway bonds that were previously that you mentioned fell off.
Yeah.
They started increasing that, I believe. This was prior to me, so I am just speaking on general idea and not fact on that.
Yeah, so we, so it's been pretty good. In that way, they've been able to do reconstruction of roads, knowing that the additional money was coming and that they were able to bank that money to do it, you know, within the seasons. So, John would, if I let John tell you, John would probably tell you he needs double that to actually catch up, because we're behind.
Correct. And again, the drawback, for instance, the Harbor Road Culvert was $1.5 million project that we just completed. So it took us three years to accumulate that money to be able to put it out the bid and actually have it constructed. So, as John says, "Yeah, you want to give me more? Absolutely." But...
But pretty much the directive they got was, is then, and you can probably all attest to this, there's no potholes in town. You know, I mean, the roads here, if you go to other towns, we have a pretty good reputation. Would they use more money? Absolutely. There's probably a number of roads that need to be reconstructed. Going back to your impact fee statement, back on the planning board, many years ago, his, the gentleman who was in the position prior to John Yanos put in place regulations that had them build roads that could actually last 50 years, so that we weren't redoing, you know, and the developer would have to take on the burden of building those roads, not using impact fees, but they had to build those roads as part of their project. So that, not a development agreement, but, you know, an agreement through enforcing our ordinances. Creative at the time.
Both to a standard.
Okay, got it.
That's what the bottom line is.
Good.
Thank you. I think that's all for DPW?
Yeah.
That was easy.
But don't worry, you and I are gonna talk about Lions Hall. So a couple for Justin. And then I think we're close, right?
Yeah, we're very close.
So...
Only at the 50-yard line.
Health insurance, well, for you guys. We don't have any questions. We're letting you ask all the answers. Health insurance benefits for part-time employees. What is the minimum number of hours? Well, go ahead, go with that first, Justin.
There are only three individuals that are part-time that are eligible for health insurance.
Okay. So we have approximately 200 full-time employees. We're averaging 26K in health insurance costs per employee, if the part-time employees were not included.
Okay.
How does that 26K employee compared, that we're paying, compare to the portion that the employee is covering? If our average, if our average is 26K, it's correct. And that was what our fee is for a full-time employee for health insurance. What's their cost?
So, there's only one union that has an employee portion cost. And that is only, I believe, 2% or 3%?
4% now. I think it's, it's gonna be 4%, I believe, beginning in '25.
You're gonna need to explain that more. There HSAs, you need to go into more depth in explaining.
So, several years ago, we switched over to the high-deductible plan, and those require the HSA. What the town did is, in the union negotiations to get them to switch over to the high-deductible healthcare, we negotiated their, I say, the negotiation took place regarding their comp, their portion versus the town's portion. So, instead of being on a PPO plan, they're all on high-deductible at this point. And we only cover what, so let's say you decide to go on the PPO plan instead, the town will only cover what it would for the high-deductible plan. Everything above that, you have, the employee covers.
Okay, but the towns, so the other thing that's negotiated in that is how much the town would put in. So, the town I work in, we pay a portion of the health insurance cost, but the town gives us a certain amount of money towards our deductible every year. Puts that into the HSA. Are we doing that as well, or no?
Yes.
I want to work here.
So basically, so, five years ago?
Yeah, I think we finished five years ago.
Finished five years ago, so we were paying on these PPO plans and you could select wherever you wanted to go and everything else. The calculation was that if we would absorb the HSA fee, you know, the deductible fee, and we were going, when they ran all the math, we were gonna save a quarter of a million dollars on health insurance by getting them to move over. And the employee would actually put more money in their pocket, yet the taxpayer would save a quarter of a million dollars every year going forward. So we did that about four or five years ago. We highly encourage the other forms of government to join us in that. I'm not sure where they stand, but we highly encourage them to go down that path as well, because it was just a huge savings. Where we're at, we now have all new collective bargaining agreements as we're going through them. And as healthcare continues to change, that is all open for negotiation as far as mutual contributions going forward. Does that answer your question? Yes, to some degree. So as it stands now, we cover 100% of the health insurance premium, right? And what are we giving the employee towards the deductible?
Except the TAP union. There's one union where we don't pay 100%.
Okay. You're right. I was painting with a broad brush, sorry. So, the, say the family deductible is $4,000. Are we contributing two? Are we contributing four? What are we doing?
So, I'll speak with a broad brush here, too, because some of the unions, it changes.
Okay, fair enough. Eight different unions, so...
For the most part, a single plan. It's $1,000. For a two-personer family, it's $2,000.
That's our contribution.
To their HSA, yes.
Okay. Okay.
As I said, some of the unions, it differs, but that is a general consensus on it.
And by doing that, we were able to lower all of our premiums, because it invested the employee into the plan with us, working with us, versus not before. Okay. What incentives do we have in place to encourage employees to opt out of insurance benefits if they can?
And if I may just interject before we get to that point, so, just going on the point that you made, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we did save a significant amount of money when this occurred. I think what nobody anticipated was that all of the regulatory changes to the health insurance markets, that the Obamacare legislation was intended to have, really hasn't, health insurance costs have not been controlled the way that anybody anticipated that they would be. And so, we have these larger structural issues, yeah, about...
Government screwed it up?
That really, I mean, have affected frankly our calculus on this as well. We, you know, I think we saved, we saved a lot of money early on. We're probably doing better than we would have been doing if we hadn't made these changes. But I think, you know, everybody should, should, can reasonably be disappointed about the fact that health insurance costs as a nation are out of control and there just doesn't seem to be any way to bring that in at the moment.
Just, we went up, we had $700,000 drop-off in our bond payments?
Correct.
And our health insurance went up $900,000?
It went up more than that. It went up $1.3 million.
So $700,000 in bond payments, which means this building and the police department and everything else that was on that warrant article went out.
Yep.
And we added 1.3 million.
Correct.
Okay. So, and that's kind of, that strikes to the heart of my frustration here, is that as we, as we have bonds come off, we want to be able to use that money, that savings, to get other bonds, to do the other things that we need to do, like public works and other projects. And Lions Hall and whatever, whatever people decide.
I'm laughing because it's your frustration. You should, you should have seen our frustration when we got this news. I mean, we were hoping exactly that. You put your figure right on it.
So...
I, I'll be honest, and this is bad, I was beyond annoyed, because I really thought with $800,000 falling off, I was gonna be able to provide you guys with an operating budget that is below where it was last year and still provide exactly what we needed because of the work we did in last year's budget. Then I found out 19%. And I shut my door and said some choice words, because it was, to be honest, it was defeating. Because I really was hopeful that I would be able to do that. And this, you look at the rest of the budget and you take this away, and it's pretty, pretty close. So, I'm right there with you. If it makes you feel any better, I know it doesn't, but I'm right there with you in the frustration on that. Because this is one I was excited for this year. I had it circled, ready to go, $800,000 dropping off. Let's see what we can do, get the tax rate lower, and then 19% out of my control.
See, this goes back, right back to the opening statement I made when we started budget season. It's a choice among services.
Yes, agreed.
I mean, it's completely a choice among services. Do we continue to give the late same level of service or not? And that's where we're stuck. The balancing act that we try to do is, is we bring in this new revenue. Best we can hope for is keeping it even. I mean, it's disgusting, but that's where we are. Agreed. So then, in looking at creative ways to save, that's what we're trying to find is, is what incentives do we have in place to encourage employees to opt out of the insurance plans if they can? How do we do that?
So, that again depends on the union contract, but it's between a $2,500 buyout or a $5,000 buyout. Some of the unions have a grandfathered in that's a little bit larger. But I would agree that, I'm not sure if this is where you're going, that increasing that would encourage people to take the buyout, which would then put less on us.
But is that something we can actually do, or does that have to happen in a contract, in a contract negotiation?
You would have to bargain over it, but I don't, I don't see any union saying, "No, we don't want you to..." You know, because a buyout is a benefit as well, and it's the employee's choice entirely, whether they take it or they don't take it. And so, they're not giving up anything by us increasing the benefit, or increasing the incentive for them not to take the health insurance. So it would be a really easy negotiation, I believe.
So we're exploring that.
That is out of my range.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that I identified as something that we need to be doing or we should be doing, we should be talking about as part of this budget season. I identified it in my presentation. And it was for this reason. I was hoping that there would be some consensus that, yeah, this makes sense. There isn't really a downside for the town. And if that's the consensus, then that's what we'll do.
We'll let you know. Okay. All right, I think, I think we're last thing. MGMT services, management services.
Yes.
That line for us is confusing. It seems to be a catch, our quote here is, "It seems to be a catch-all for line items that will be more correctly listed in other places." We have some examples of that, which is in the weeds details, which we'll send to you.
I love it.
"We would like to see items under management services limited to," and this is your quote, "services provided by an outside company." So as to avoid that being a catch-all. Kind of feels like the umbrella that we throw something in when we don't really have a good idea of what place it comes.
It's for a lot of one-offs, depending on the department.
Fair enough.
There are some that I, I believe I mentioned that use it in that fashion. The fire department is a perfect example. That's where our billing agencies go through. DPW, planning, they all use it for that. For other departments, it's kind of the catch-all or for the one-offs.
And that was a confusing line for me last year, and you explained that to me. So, I'd like to see what we can do to make that line less of an umbrella.
Okay.
We'll send you the list of examples, if that's okay.
Wonderful. Absolutely.
Anybody else have anything? As far as budget committee questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to point out that I really commend the BudCon for the exemplary work that they are doing throughout this, and I really appreciate. And I know there was a moment that we were all jocular about the Lions Hall and everything, but honestly, I really appreciate the time and commitment that you've put into this to making our community and town better, to lessening the tax impact on the resident, the residents and the community members of this town. I really want to say thank you for all that work, because I know it's not easy. And you don't just have it here, you have it over on the school side as well, so...
By the way, we really like that you're going over to talk to the schools, right, Bob?
I, I think you should continue this momentum. But honestly, thank you very much. And like I said, all joking aside, hats off. So thank you.
And I'll continue off that. It's certainly, it's many questions that, you know, the five of us members may not think about. And, you know, having you guys have your dedicated time to look at these is really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. So, can I get the questions ahead of time next time, so I don't have to do these answering things from memory?
No, absolutely not.
And? Get them.
You're gonna have to start writing things down, John.
I'm getting old. Accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Liaison reports. Anything for the liaison reports? Who's the liaison to the budget committee, by the way?
I am.
You are?
I am.
Oh, boy, I tell you, straighten these guys out, will you? Go ahead, come on.
All right, school...
I'm trying to get us out of here.
School board liaison report. So the purchasing policy review, the school board has completed the third reading of the revised purchasing policy. This round of revisions involves significant changes preliminary around the financial thresholds as it was previously. Both the school board and the superintendent's office required more time for thorough reevaluation. Further discussion on this matter is scheduled for November 28. Expansion of CTE program. The superintendent has emphasized the initiative to expand the career and technical education program. This expansion is aimed at providing students with greater opportunities in various trades. The development of this initiative is an ongoing effort. Energy savings collaboration. The school board has invited the utilities committee to participate in their meeting on November 28. This collaboration is focused on initiating discussions about potential strategies on improving energy efficiency in local schools. Superintendent budget presentation. The superintendent is scheduled to present the budget for tomorrow, November 21. This is a key element to the school district's financial planning and will guide resource allocation for school activities and programs in the upcoming year. And lastly, teacher development training is rescheduled. So originally, the teacher development training originally was planned for February 6, has been rescheduled based on our Secretary of State has established our primary days to be continued being first in the nation. This adjustment accommodates New Hampshire primary set for January 23. As a result, there will be no school for students on the 23, allowing for smooth conduct of the primary and subsequent teacher training. Is that correct? Thank you. That's it.
Anything else for liaison reports? Town manager report?
Not this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Assistant town manager. Everybody all set? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Was in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks. Our next meeting is December 4.